City Clerk, are we ready to go? Good. Good evening, uh, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, May second, two thousand and twenty-two. We will be starting off with three study session topics tonight. So up first is going to be City Manager Sean Lewis, uh, the Chief of Police Sam Watson, and Director of Public Works Maria DeAndrea to present potential ballot questions related to taxation. So, City Manager, I believe you're going to get us started.
Yes, um, in fact, I'll run us through the, um, presentation, and certainly Director DeAndrea and Chief Watson have helped, um, with many of the numbers that are in the presentation tonight. And I'm realizing that the clicker is at the podium, so I will go there. So the first thing we want to do, uh, tonight is just go over really kind of the needs that have been identified by staff as well as in discussions with council during past CIP, um, discussions, as well as during my one-on-ones, concerns, certainly the police and crime study session that you all saw, um, a few weeks ago, um, and the direction that came out of that. So that's really what we're going to start with, starting with streets and alleys. Um, currently, our, um, condition index, what's the O? Overall condition index. It's really a grade that you give, um, streets. And so if you think of this as like a hundred is best and zero is the worst, um, you know, our current pavement index, um, that we conducted, uh, last year, um, ranks us at fifty-nine. So not great, passing, uh, but not, not great. So to maintain that score, um, that pavement overall condition, um, index system identified that we needed to be spending three point three million, and that was in last year's dollars, to maintain the current system as we have it now. If we wanted to move that score up to a score of seventy, um, that would take about five point five million. And it's really two to three million. It's, we have not exactly identified what it, um, the cost, but between two and three million to get us from the fifty-nine grade to the, uh, grade of seventy. And so the overall that has been spent the last five years, if we take an average of that, is about one point four five million. So you can see, even just to maintain what we have now, we're not spending enough in order to maintain our streets as they are. And of course, to move to that, um, so score of seventy, total of an additional four point, uh, oh-five million. In terms of policing, um, I won't spend a lot of time on this. You heard this a few weeks ago. Two desk officers, one of which you have in your budget amendment tonight, per your request. Um, the other desk officer, the six officers, um, for patrol and street officers, um, nine hundred and thirty thousand. And then a dispatch supervisor, which has been requested the last couple of, um, budget years, is ninety-five thousand. That's one point two million in additional police services that have been identified, um, by PD. Interestingly, uh, another thing to consider about public safety is the fact that we have been, um, you know, enhancing the police budget, enhancing the municipal court budget to pay for, um, alternate policing, which we think is absolutely critical. It's, we think that's the way that we need to move. But another way to think about this is that we haven't really fully funded, um, all of the needs of the city because we have been, um, you know, putting resources towards these really important programs. So if you think about all of our alternative policing, um, programs, that's about one point eight million with restorative justice plus our co-responders, our case management, um, in PD. And so, um, certainly as we've looked at needs, uh, through, from other departments, we know that there are things that haven't been funded and we have not been able to fund where we have funded these. So if you look at those in terms of expenses, um, that, that's something that could be, we could make that a, uh, a ballot measure and ask the voters, do you want to pay for this to, um, allow for our resources to go to other needed, um, items? So there are some, uh, tax options that we've looked at very briefly. The first, obviously, is property tax. Second, sales and use. We have not analyzed the second, uh, third and fourth, but certainly we could if council, um, gives that direction. But a head tax, which I know has been on the ballot in this community in years past, um, has not been approved. Um, or a tax or a partial tax, this is something that would not require voter approval. But you could turn on some portion of grocery tax. Uh, many cities in Colorado tax groceries at the same sales tax rate, um, as, uh, the rest of the, uh, items. Um, and so that's something that is, uh, an option for council. We have not analyzed that either. So this is the property tax mill levy comparison. You can see, we actually are the lowest, um, of the cities, um, that were selected really based on their proximity to Denver and in the metro area with the exception of Boulder, um, that's a little bit further out. And so, um, we're at about seventy point four two nine, going all the way up to Thornton, um, which is, uh, a hundred and ten. Looking at sales tax, um, we're right there, kind of in the, the middle spot. Um, Lakewood and Greenwood Village are three percent. Um, Inglewood, Wheat Ridge, Cherry Hills Village, um, and Sheridan are all at three and a half percent. And then you can see, um, Littleton down to Denver go from three point seven five to four point eight one. So we are, um, a little bit higher in the pack certainly, um, than we are on property, um, but still relatively low compared to some. And then these are really what we just took to, um, show you what if you, you know, wanted us to pursue, um, more research, more analysis on this question. These are some of the projected yields that, um, different amounts would, uh, total. So the percent increase above the current rate on sales tax, remember, our rate is three point five. Um, so it would move us to, to increase that one percent would be a three point five, uh, three-five, um, new rate and would yield three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So you can see that as you go up to that, um, if we went, uh, up a little bit higher than Denver, Denver's at four point eight one, but if we were at four point two, that would yield six point seven million, um, at a rate, uh, at a twenty percent increase on our current sales tax. Property tax, um, you can see there, each mill that council could level, or the voters, I should say, that council could authorize for a ballot, each mill increase would result in about eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. And, um, going up, if you did five mil, mills, that would be about four point four nine three mills. And again, looking at our property tax in relation to other cities, that seven point five would be equivalent to, actually, it would still make us the third lowest, um, I mean, in that, uh, third lowest, um, within the state. Um, well, top two, we would still be top two in lowest, even if we went up, um, to the five mills. So, um, this is really just background information. We haven't spent a tremendous amount of time on this. Certainly, we don't want to move forward with this if council, um, is not, uh, interested in moving forward with this. But we are, um, glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis, for the presentation. Open up for questions from council. Mayor Protem?
I would be interested in seeing some information on head tax, uh, potentially. Uh, now that we have universal business registration, it seems like we would have some idea of the number of employees that we have in the city, based on the size of the businesses that are registered. The other, uh, piece of information that I think is missing here is a, is a historical analysis of what has been presented to the voters over time, uh, in Inglewood and what the result of that election was. Uh, I recall doing that at some point when I was on the Budget Advisory Committee, but I think that would kind of fill in the picture for us when we have asked previously and what we have asked for and what the response has been.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Manager, for the presentation. On the, the streets, um, side of things, I'm, I'm trying to understand the, how, how that would work if, are, are there, thinking through, are there other options on how to fund that? Because it seems to me like we, we have an issue where we need to bring our streets up to a new baseline. If we, would it be possible to do a big one-time expenditure or fund that with, um, a bond or something like that? And then, and then bring, would that bring the maintenance cost down? Or is that three point three going to be the same to maintain it? Three point three million to maintain it no matter where it is? And, and do we have a sense of what it would cost to bring us up to, you know, like a, a seventy across the board, like some of these other cities?
And it's certainly Director DeAndrea can answer those, the technical parts of that. But I do want to be transparent in the fact that you saw a CIP, um, a week ago or so that proposes in two thousand and twenty-three, making a one-time using ARPA dollars, using others, a one-time, a much larger investment. So we're really just looking at the past five years, and that's where that dollar amount came from, but Maria, uh, Director DeAndrea can speak better to that.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Anderson. I believe the question is, so if we, yeah, how much effort could we undertake to kind of raise the bar across the board? And then what would it take for ongoing maintenance? I think one of the restrictions at this point is, and we kind of experienced this last year where we had an influx of additional million dollars through some of the LTAR funds that we used last year. So we were, um, we had a contract for that mill in Overly of roughly just under two million dollars. It was a lot for staff to do. It was all in Area Zone Three, which is kind of the northwest portion of the central area. And so it was, um, pretty extensive. So I think, to answer your question, I think there is some limitations in terms of how much could we do with staff resources and manage that level of project, um, which would be some of the limitations as opposed to just the dollar amounts. But I think upping, you know, from that one and a half to two million that we're doing per year, roughly, you know, getting it up to that three point three to, to four million is probably achievable. Um, beyond that, it would be a little bit more. So I think we'd still be looking at stretching it out over a period of between five to ten years to really make those significant upgrades.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Member Woodward?
Now, when are you thinking about the possibility of, of bringing this up for election?
Well, depending on your direction tonight, if you want us to move forward with additional research and analysis, um, we would just need to have, uh, a final decision made by June. Uh, we have a drop-dead date in order to put things on the ballot for, uh, November, but it would be November of this year. If you wanted to push that to, um, you know, next year, certainly that relieves some of that time pressure.
Yeah, I would think it would, in my opinion, be pushed to next year simply because it's May one now and having to have it, the ballot question written by July. That's a lot of work in the next two months.
You're, you're absolutely right. We have, um, got, uh, we've gone through a RFP process for, um, a public engagement company. Um, the selected vendor is Magellan Strategies. And, um, so they, um, are ready, um, if, with your, you all, your direction tonight, um, to move forward with that, um, public engagement process. And, um, they think they can do that within that timeframe, um, and, and really help to understand, you know, community priorities on this, um, on, on these issues. But, um, certainly, you, you are correct, it would be, um, a, a bit of a time crunch.
Okay.
I, I also, if I could also, apologies, uh, we do have next year on the ballot will be, we retire the GO obligations for the Parks and Rec Bonds that were issued twenty years ago. So next year, we know that that needs to go back on the ballot to fund another round, um, sell bonds in order to fund parks and recreation facilities that frankly haven't been updated in over twenty years since that bond was issued. And so, um, that will, we know that will be on the ballot next year if council chooses to do that, which staff is highly recommending, to keep the property tax at its current rate, but be able to sell additional bonds.
Correct. Okay, I have one other question, too. And this goes to the McClellan properties that are currently not leased and the possibility of a lease. Um, if the revenue from those were put forward to s- some of this, I mean, for capital improvements and it was just, or certainly police and fire and stuff, uh, do you have any idea, uh, just approximately what type of revenue we would be looking at?
Yes, uh, well, I can, I can speak to the, the two thousand and twenty-three kind of horizon. We have one, um, uh, company that is, we're negotiating, doing final negotiations with, on some of the McClellan properties, and that looks like it's going to be somewhere around the three hundred thousand dollar a year range. Um, so that certainly is a source of funding. Um, and then there's another, um, company, uh, that is looking at some sort of assisted living facility. And that would be, you know, somewhere in that same kind of ballpark. And so, you know, if we could get more of those leased, um, certainly that is another source of revenue. The way we've kind of looked at it between finance and the City Manager's office is that, that the revenue we could make on the McClellan properties would really help supplement that, um, you know, the property and sales tax that the increment for tax increment financing in the DDA for, you know, we're not going to have that same kind of growth trajectory that we've been on because we are committing, you know, dollars to that, um, project. So we've kind of seen this as something McClellan could kind of take the place of the natural kind of growth of our, um, taxes, if that makes sense.
Yes, I, yeah, I hear what you're saying. I know when we did, started leasing the McClellan properties and created the later fund, it was, um, the profits from that, the net profits, were to be going to the later fund. As time went on, those funds were utilized for different things, uh, other than capital or future assets or replacement of assets. And now it's, now for all practical purposes, it's, later fund is no longer, or the same way it was. It's been assigned to different things operating.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. I have a couple of questions, uh, City Manager. Going back, and they're all in regards to the streets and alleys, uh, slide, it's one of the first ones. So when it says that we're trying to get to seventy and there's five point five million annually, for how many years? Is this just ongoing or?
Yes, that would be annual on an ongoing basis.
So that would be a five point five every year on the budget?
Right.
Uh, does that include, include paving of the alleys?
It does not.
So that is just getting our roads into, you know, a better state to seventy percent, uh, seventy?
Correct. And we did put some, uh, analysis in your memo about the cost of paving, both asphalt and, uh, concrete. So certainly that could be, um, something else that we put into a, you know, the discussion. Um, we have talked to the, um, the firm that could do some of that public outreach. And, um, although he said he's never heard of that on a ballot in Colorado that he knows of, um, if it's something that's of interest to this community, they could do some, you know, research around that.
And last question, if we were to put it to, uh, ballot, would we earmark it specifically for alley streets or whatever we decide? Would it just be earmarked for that specific purpose?
Well, uh, staff would recommend that council consider that because typically voters like to know what their money is going for. You may remember, two years ago, we put, thinking it was a pretty innocuous, not paid by our residents, um, hotel occupancy tax increase of a pretty modest amount, and it was pretty soundly rejected. We did no public information around it, thinking, again, it's not paid by our residents. Surely this will be approved, and, uh, it was voted down. So I, I think that, you know, we, ballot measures have a much better, um, chance of passing if voters know what the money is going for, so that would be staff's recommendation.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. Uh, Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I think what would be helpful for me in this conversation is a little bit more of the history of how we've got to this point. As the Mayor Protem mentioned, what have we done in the past? But also, I believe last week we were looking at, we haven't looked at some of these assessments since the nineteen eighties. And so what, what's our history of looking at some of these rates? And then also, how far behind are we in the investment over the last several decades in our infrastructure? And has the need in infrastructure and our funding rates kept pace or not? And knowing kind of how far we are, what's the delta would be helpful for me. Um, and then also, do we actually have someone from Magellan Strategies here? I believe, maybe I saw someone earlier or no?
Yes, yes, I believe.
Yes. Yep. I don't know if you can hear me or not. I am here.
We can.
We can hear you. Introduce yourself and then take a question.
Absolutely, Sean. Hello, everybody. My name is David Flaherty. Uh, I'm the CEO of Magellan Strategies. Our firm provides ballot measure and community survey research services to local governments like Inglewood, special districts, and school districts. Been doing this for fifteen years. Uh, we submitted our proposal, uh, to help you determine and measure voter support and opposition, uh, for some of your proposals as you, you know, arrive at, uh, you know, where you want to go and what you want to do. And I think staff's done an excellent job, by the way, about laying a sales and use tax and what that generates versus a mill levy. Um, uh, so, uh, with that said, uh, we really appreciate the opportunity to help you out, uh, if you decide to move forward with a, with a really good voter opinion, uh, survey, uh, so that you have some data to make some decisions around. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Um, can you share a little about what the community research would look like, um, and a bit about your methodology as well?
Absolutely. Um, first and foremost, um, you know, we're going to wait the survey results based on a midterm turnout election. And in my proposal, I've put in the voter demographic spreadsheet. I don't know if that's available in your packets or not, but, you know, we're looking at a turnout. In two thousand and eighteen, roughly sixteen thousand voters turned out to vote out of the twenty-two thousand on your registration roll. So first and foremost, we're going to use that last midterm as sort of a guidepost for us to weight our, uh, population groups accordingly from, based on party affiliation, age, uh, and, uh, racial makeup and, and region. Um, our data collection is really done two ways. One is, uh, from text, uh, where we send an MMS text and also in our, uh, proposal, you show what it looks like. It's not a spammy, hey, would you support a tax increase, yes or no? It's going to show the logo of the city of Inglewood. It's a very professional, uh, trustworthy-looking message saying, hey, the city of Inglewood is conducting an important survey, and we really want to learn, uh, and, and understand your opinion around very important issues that can affect your community. They'll then click on that, and, and we will have, you know, roughly eight to nine thousand. I'm sorry, I don't know. Did somebody inter, I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody say something.
Mr. Flaherty, continue.
Okay, sorry.
The background news was coming from, but we heard it as well.
Okay, yeah, I thought I heard a dog or something. Anyway, um, but we're basically going to send that text invitation. We have cell phone numbers for, you know, roughly ten thousand households and individuals in the community that are registered to vote. In addition to, and what we'll do, too, is work with your communications team. We will send out a communication saying, hey, on May twelfth, on Tuesday in the afternoon, we are kicking off a very important survey, uh, to address some important issues in the city. Um, some of you will receive a text. Some of you will receive an email from our, uh, city services. And you'll also be able to go to the city's website to participate in the survey. So a good survey is really giving people the opportunity to participate in it. So the texting and email is just one way. And then during, you know, we'll keep the survey open ten to fourteen days. Um, during that time, we will send several reminders to everyone. Um, in addition, you know, encouraging, uh, city staff to send something out as well. We will also interview, though, on the telephone, uh, seniors, typically sixty-year-old. Uh, seniors are historically, uh, very tax adverse, uh, because, you know, regardless of the purpose, simply because they, uh, live on fixed incomes. And in these days of rising inflation, we like seniors to have more than one ability, uh, one way to participate in the survey. So we'll interview about a hundred to a hundred and fifty seniors over the telephone, in addition, just to make sure we have a really good measurement on those seniors because, uh, historically, they are the ones that are really, uh, going to be important. Now, understand something, too. It's not that when we are texting, uh, response rates are coming in, we don't get a single senior to participate. Typically, seniors sixty-five and older will make up twenty percent of our unweighted response data. So that is the, the, the method of how we will collect data and information using those three methods, phone, texting, and then as well as publicizing and, uh, raising awareness about the survey during a certain amount of period. And then we will wait those results, uh, based on what two thousand and eighteen's turnout was. Um, I encourage you, if you haven't seen the proposal, to make sure and see, hey, um, we, we really know what we're doing when we're waiting this appropriately. Now, you have to also take into account, the two thousand and eighteen election had a very large turnout among younger voters and Democrat and center-left unaffiliated voters, um, in all due honesty because of, uh, you know, the Donald Trump, you know, environment at the time. This is a different environment, but again, that, that's, I'm sorry to take up so much time, but that's, that's generally our approach.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. I appreciate it.
Any other questions from council? Mayor Protem?
So we're talking about a, the potential for a, a tax in perpetuity to handle these projects. And I, I'm curious if the possibl, about the possibility of bonding for this. If we go back to the previous slide and we look at Sheridan, for instance, they're, one of the reasons why their mill levy is so high is because they're paying into a bond fund at, uh, twelve point four four seven mills. Uh, and those who have driven in Sheridan in the past five years have probably noticed that their roads went from crumbling to very drivable. Uh, I, one would presume because of this bond that was taken. Um, is, is it possible that we could draw this as a bond as opposed to something that exists in perpetuity?
Absolutely. And certainly that's something that we can, um, uh, do more research and analysis on, as well as what many cities have done, and that's a sunset tax that says, you know, for, this will be for five years. And then at the end of five years, if you like what you've seen with these projects, you can vote to reauthorize it. Um, so we can, and the survey can be, you know, conducted and written any way that you like. We would just like that direction on what to analyze.
Yeah, I guess I'll just go on record here and say that I favor a general mill levy increase for public safety that pays for staffing and personnel. On the infrastructure and roadside, I, I would strongly prefer something that does sunset at some point so that we can rebuild and to decide how to maintain it from, from that point forward.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anybody else want to weigh in?
I am open to, uh, I would be leaning towards a mill levy increase, uh, but I do want to see different options and just get as much information as possible in terms of what's possible. I haven't really thought about in terms of just earmarking it specifically towards infrastructure or public safety, but, um, I'm open for all options here.
Anyone else want to weigh in or, Member Woodward?
Yeah, I would, uh, agree with Steve on police going after that as a bond issue. Um, and with the rest of it, I, I think we, I mean, just from looking at the mill levies here, we are, other than Denver, substantially under everybody else on the list. And so I would look at that. As far as sales tax, I, I wouldn't look at that personally. I just, I think that puts us in, in a bad position. Uh, um, with reference to grocery tax, if we did something less than three and a half percent, one percent, or something like that, that was negligible, I would consider that to the kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Anyone else want to weigh in? Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you for the presentation. The thing that troubles me tremendously, I've been on council for six years. Every year, city staff comes forward, let's raise taxes. Um, we're struggling. We never consider cutting our spending and prioritizing the, with the money that we already have. I think, and this council is really good at going out and spending more money. We're going to have, um, a supplemental coming forward. And so we increase spending without ever thinking of the consequences of it. And in twenty-six years, I have never paid less property tax than I have in previous years. So the city is getting more money. Um, we've gone from like a forty million dollar general fund budget to fifty-five million dollars. It seems like we're always spending more than we get. We need to start thinking about the people out there. Good luck! We are experiencing spiraling inflation, and we are about ready to enter into a recession, if not a depression. And I think we all need to start considering how we're spending the money and the taxpayers' money. Thank you. So I am not in favor of moving any of these forward.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else want to weigh in?
Mayor?
The gentleman on the line.
Mr. Flaherty?
Yeah, I would just, from our experience, folks, typically, you know, mill levy increases are more difficult to pass because they're owned more by homeowners, obviously. And homeowners tend to have an older age. And I would just add one other thing. And I appreciate the way you're looking at comparing your own mill levy rates compared to other surrounding municipalities, et cetera. But the one thing you really want to calculate is what is the cost of a one-mill increase? Or let's say you say you need five point five million on an annual basis to maintain your road service up to that seventy grade. What we really want to put in the survey and educate and inform voters is, is that, let's say you came up with a three-mill increase. So that you can tell a voter, a three-mill increase will cost a homeowner in Inglewood on a home valued at what the median may be, you know, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, et cetera, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. On annually, it will cost them X dollars a year. I just wanted to suggest that to you. A sales tax is typically easier to pass, but I just wanted to pass along that information for the good of your conversation, but also just recommend that too, because voters need to know what a mill levy increase is actually going to cost them so they can rationalize it as they evaluate, you know, what is being offered or proposed to them. So, you know, with that, I was just, that's all I was going to add and that's all I have.
Thank you for that, Mr. Flaherty. No, definitely agree with that point. City manager, I don't see any further questions up. Member Noonan Kim.
Oh, wait. I'll just say, I'm open to receiving more information on this topic. But I hear Member Russell's concerns that this is a hard conversation to have when we're experiencing so much inflation, when many individuals are still coming out of a really tough couple of years. And I don't want us to make any of these decisions or even have these conversations without acknowledging that reality for a lot of our citizens and that that needs to be part of this conversation. And while I hear that the general fund spending has increased, we remain as a city in the hole on the needs that we have in our infrastructure. Our need is outpacing our funding. It was a long road that got us to this point and it will be a long road that will get us out of it. And I think that I would like to see kind of how we've gotten here to understand if have we been negligent in the past and how can we correct those errors to ensure that the city is strong moving forward? So I'm open to having the conversation, but I want us to do so cautiously and compassionately.
Thank you, Member Noonan Kim. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So for the city manager, if, what would be the process here for doing a survey to gather information? So if we said we want to consider a mill levy or consider gathering input for a mill levy for public safety, would then we go do the survey or is this something we're going to decide we're going to create language for and do the survey after it's already going on the ballot? Like, how, what's the timeline for that?
Right, that's a great question, Member Anderson. Essentially, if you, it sounds like we have at least four council members who do want to move forward with more research and analysis. Based on all of the comments that we've heard, look at bonding, look at a sunset, sunsetted tax, and then the additional information about historically, what have we spent as well as taken in? And what have we asked for voters? It's been years since we've asked the voters for a sales tax or property tax increase. But we would then do that research and analysis based on the things that you've said tonight and come back to you just as a data point. It would just be a data point for you to decide ultimately what goes on the ballot.
Well, I would be curious to know how the citizens would feel about a small mill levy increase specifically for crime and public safety, knowing that we have this need for potentially one point two million of additional police expenditures. And I'm not sure where that money would come from on an ongoing basis. And I'd love to know if the citizens want to expend that money. So if that means doing, doing the survey, another way to do it, to get that information is to put it on the ballot and see if it gets shot down or not. I mean, I really do want this to be a citizen decision where the, what are the priorities for our city? And I don't, I don't see how we would fund that if we didn't at least have a conversation about it. So I'm in favor of moving just that piece forward personally.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Mayor Protem?
I'd also like to note that for anyone who's concerned about the scope creep of government or the size of government increasing or our spending increasing from year to year and thinks that we should make cuts, instead of looking at the potential for tax increases, I'm very open to any suggestions as to what would be cut. But simply the statement, we should make cuts, is not very useful to me. I would like to hear what you would like to have cut and what you would be willing to give up, noting that Inglewood is a full-service city that provides a full-service park service, a full-service police department and fire services. What services would you like to see left on the table or the chopping block?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And just lastly, just to add to Member Anderson's, I guess one of the questions I would have in terms of a valid measure specifically for public safety, obviously, there's raises that go with that. So how do we cover the annual pay increases for those six to eight that are part of, part of public safety ongoing if we're just going to do a mill levy increase? So having that as part of the analysis would be another question I have. Any other questions from council? Member Woodward?
Not a question, just a couple of points. As I recall, when we put the the police building on the ballot, and one of the things that we used, meaning everybody that was electioning for it, was that the recreational bonds would retire in twenty twenty-three. And Parks and Recreation right now is looking at some sort of bond issue to replace that Parks and Recreation bond that started back in, or that was on, it was voted in in two thousand and one, I believe it was. So I don't legitimately, I don't think that's something that we should be using or even considering that that's retiring. I think that's a Parks and Recreation stuff, thing. And I even think, if I remember correctly, the school bonds, when they were, when those came up to replace the five elementaries, it was pointed out that the bond issue would retire for Parks and Recreation in twenty twenty-three. So I really don't want to hear about that one anymore. I mean, how many times can we use that? The other thing regarding real estate taxes, everybody that owns a home in Inglewood knows that real estate taxes have gone up quite a bit with the appreciation of buildings or of residences in all commercial buildings. There is an automatic increase in the revenue, which recently has certainly been more than just the cost of living. Now, this year may be entirely different, but as, I mean, they're still going up. So that's, that's an increase. I would be in favor of moving forward and looking at this more and doing more analysis on it, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Woodward. City manager, oh, Member Anderson, sorry.
Thank you. Just one more question, I guess, because I think Mayor Protem brings up a good point about, you know, where would we cut if we were to cut? And I think Member Russell's question is a good one and something that I think about as an individual is, if I need more money, I can cut some from the budget or try to find a job that pays more or something like that. And I do think it's a valid point in the conversation. Would, as a part of this research, could staff say, hey, if we didn't, you know, if we didn't pass this mill levy, here are some areas where we think we could cut in order to prioritize public safety just so we have, have some options to talk to the citizens about or perhaps even gather information when we're doing a survey for the citizens? Say, to actually bring some ideas, here's what we could cut. I don't even know where to go. Again, again, I mean, this is going to be a hard conversation, right? But is there, are there some areas of, that we could, could say we could cut there in order to do that? Because I do think if this doesn't pass, we got to figure out a way to increase spending on public safety. If we were, you know, if this was to go on the ballot and not pass, there would still be the follow-up conversation, one way or the other there.
Great question, Member Anderson. And yes, when, you may remember at the study session, there were three council members who said, move forth with the one point two million, which I thought, I guess I better get ready for a one point two million budget amendment to fund this if one more council member, you know, went on record saying, I want to do this. So I have privately compiled a list of staff that will need to be cut in order to create those positions in the absence of new revenue. So absolutely, that work has had to unfortunately begin and we can certainly do that. I would, it would probably be more departmental here. Obviously, it would be demoralizing to staff to know that they have been deprioritized and will be cut. But it's an exercise that city managers have to undertake. So we can do that.
Any other comments? City manager, thank you very much for the presentation tonight. Moving on to the second agenda item is Director of Public Works Maria DeAndrea to speak about the Santa Fe Planning and Environmental Linkage Study.
Yes, good evening. So this is the culmination tonight of about a two-year effort that was undertaken by CDOT to look at Santa Fe Boulevard for an approximate length of about eleven miles. So all the way from Alameda Avenue on the north in the city and county of Denver, all the way down to C four seventy in Douglas County. And really, just jumping back here, P E L stands for Planning and Environmental Linkage Study. So this is really about looking essentially the first phase of what would be considered National Environmental Policy Act or NEPA to start to look at and prioritize projects based on a screening level analysis. And I'll talk more about that. But essentially, for the primary, primary length of this project, I've been the staff liaison working with the committee and CDOT on this effort. Former Mayor Olson was on the executive committee and participated in several meetings as well. So really, the purpose tonight is to present the recommendations that have come out of this study. There's quite a bit of information in your packet, so all of the attachments were there. And then really to see, is there any direction or feedback to CDOT on the study that you would like to see as a city council? And or a further direction for them to consider as they finalize this document? But the ultimate purpose will be is that the recommendations that come out of this effort will be used as we go forward to analyze and submit projects for actual construction. So you can see here the other agencies that were involved. Again, CDOT led the effort, but all of the other cities and counties were involved in this as well. And again, it was a, about an eleven-mile stretch that runs through all of those communities. And really, with the purpose being is to identify those transportation issues as well as community environmental concerns that would lead ultimately to a set of both short and long-term projects or recommendations that could improve the transportation function of the corridor. So they really focused on safety, operational performance, meaning how well does the corridor function and move traffic through as well as across? And then multimodal connections. So is there a better way to serve pedestrians, pedestrians, bicyclists and transit within and adjacent to the corridor? So some of the goals were really to look at, look at Santa Fe in terms of not just as a road to carry traffic north and south, but also recognize that a lot of traffic, similar to Inglewood, we have community on both sides. So we're not solely just on the east side. We have portions of our city that are on the, on the west side as well as major shopping and industrial efforts that span both sides of the corridor. So there is a great effort that needs to be, or emphasis on moving traffic across Santa Fe, not just along it. Also, to support our local planning efforts. So a lot of effort has been done within all of those communities and those counties to plan, to look at redevelopment, such as the civic center area here as well as up and down the corridor. And how does this effort promote and support that? It says there optimizing transit use and multimodal opportunities. And that last bullet, providing redundancy for the regional transportation system. So this road does carry a large amount of traffic, but also when there is incidents on I twenty-five, it can also serve as an alternate north-south corridor to have people travel down to C four seventy or northbound to I twenty-five when other north-south roads are congested or have some sort of incident going on. So just very quickly, the process that was gone through. Again, this was a evaluation to look at basically from a thirty-thousand-foot level, what were all the possible options to consider? And then there were two levels of screening that we went through to look at how well does the, do these options or different recommendations fit the purpose and need? So that first level there, you can see level two A was really focused on how quickly we can look at implementation. So can they be implemented roughly within the next ten years? If those, if that was a yes, and that they were serving again the purpose and need, those results or those recommendations were carried forward. Then we went to level two B, which again was another level of screening of those carried-forward initiatives to say, do these fit various themes? Do they fit again to move forward or further impact, positive impacts on the overall implementation if we were to move forward with these? So just jumping back here, so you can see there, just on the bottom, towards the bottom of the slide, we're at the recommendations portion of the project. And again, moving from here, CDOT is soliciting input on these recommendations before they actually finalize the document. So getting into the recommendations. So there were, again, focused on that safety, operational performance and multimodal connectivity and that they could be implemented within the next few years. They also looked at options such as technology that could improve the corridor. So things like what are called adaptive signal systems, so where the signals talk to each other and they don't just sit in a stagnant kind of cycle, but they actually work with each other to move traffic across and along the corridor, things like that. There's much emerging technology. And then the, the recommendations were broken down into two categories. So roadway, things along the roadway, again, for vehicle travel versus multimodal projects. So instead of those two categories having to compete with each other, they were separated and categorized or prioritized within each of those. So they did identify a number of early action projects as well. So there was money set aside. This is kind of a unique project. There was money set aside to actually do something. So not just study something, but actually come out and build something. And I'll show you those here in a minute. And then projects that were deemed worthy, that met the purpose and need, but would take likely longer than ten years to implement, were identified as future actions. So the project recommendations are outlined here. You can see that they touch pretty much every element of the corridor. And then I'll talk specifically about the recommendations that are within the area of Inglewood's portion of the project. So this shows for the overall, all of the top-rated roadway projects, you can see the higher rating is the most, is the highest priority, starting there with the Bowles Avenue Quadrant Road, which is located in the city of Littleton. And then I've highlighted and italicized the projects that are within or near the Inglewood area. So you can see there, Union Avenue doing a channelized T with a grade separation received a very high score, as well as building a frontage road from Dartmouth to the north up to Harvard, basically skirting somewhere near the service center and the South Platte Renew Wastewater Treatment Plant, basically to take more of that access off of Santa Fe and move it to a rear frontage road behind those facilities. And then Hampton Interchange modifications. So this would actually remove the traffic signals on Santa Fe, move them down onto Hampton in order to allow free-flow traffic along Hampton and avoid those two signals that are currently there on Santa Fe right now. And then a northbound auxiliary lane through Dartmouth is identified currently as an early action project. And this, right now, there's actually through, three lanes as you travel northbound just south of the Dartmouth Interchange. And this would build or continue that northbound lane up through that to provide some additional capacity. Oops. And then the top-rated multimodal projects, again, I've highlighted the ones that are in or near the Inglewood area. The second one there being a pedestrian bridge over Santa Fe to connect the Inglewood Station on the east side of Santa Fe to the multimodal or, excuse me, multifamily area within the city of Sheridan. So you can see the rating that it received. Then a Hampton Avenue sidewalk. So this would be along the north side of Hampton. Again, to, you can see kind of the beaten path that's been worn into the ground right now. Again, to, you can see kind of the beaten path that's been worn into the ground right now. And, uh, they would construct that sidewalk as an early action item, and I'll show a photo of that here in just a minute. And then finally, building bike lanes along Oxford Avenue. So city of Inglewood has on-street bike lanes up to Windermere. And then this would continue bike lanes west of there through the Santa Fe interchange, or intersection, and then west along Oxford through the city of Sheridan. So again, just touching on those early action projects. Again, you can see they're scattered throughout the, the corridor. But the ones that impact, uh, Inglewood, here you can see a graphic that shows that nor, uh, new sidewalk along Hampton Avenue. This would basically go from the, um, east side of Santa Fe, underneath Santa Fe, because it goes, uh, Hampton does travel underneath Santa Fe at that location, through that Cloverleaf, and then out to South Platte River Drive in Sheridan. That currently is funded, and the design for that should start within the next couple of months here, and hopefully be constructed in 2023. Uh, similarly, on the south side of Oxford, this is located, uh, completely in Sheridan, but we're familiar with this area just south of the River Point Development. Can see there again, uh, there's been a beaten path because there's actually a, a bus stop out along that, that segment. And so this would build a new sidewalk along that portion of Oxford Avenue out to the intersection of Santa Fe. Again, this is funded and would be constructed in the same timeframe as I mentioned in 2023 with that Hampton Avenue sidewalk. The northbound auxiliary lane has also been identified as a potential early action project. However, it's currently not funded. Um, CDOT is identifying, trying to identify funds for this, but it would reduce the crashes overall. It was the hope of, because right now there's a lot of rear-end crashes at this location, especially in the northbound direction, and essentially remove a bottleneck uh, that's caused by going from three lanes down to two on the north side of Dartmouth Avenue. Another early action project that's not funded, but doing some better wayfinding to get people. There's an existing trail, as you may all know, that goes under Santa Fe, uh, on the south side of Dartmouth Avenue. And really just directing people in a better way to know that that's there, that that's available for use, than trying to cross at grade across Santa Fe. And then future action items that are within the Inglewood area. The plan would be is ultimately, again, this is greater than 10 years out, would be to reconstruct the, uh, Dartmouth Avenue intersection as an interchange. So that would mean grades separating one direction or the other so that there'd be free-flow traffic in one direction. Most likely, Santa Fe going up and over Dartmouth to allow that free-flowing traffic underneath. Uh, the Oxford Sheridan Station, adding parking and sidewalk down there. As you know, that's one of the few light rail lines along this, uh, the end line, or excuse me, the, this line that doesn't have dedicated parking lot associated with the light rail station. Again, that Oxford Sheridan, uh, pedestrian bicyclist grades separated, so, uh, a, a ped bridge there as well from the Oxford Station across Santa Fe over to the River Point Development is a future project. And then modifying the Bellevue Interchange, which is now what's called a single-point urban interchange, and just making some modifications for pedestrians and bicyclists to better improve their, their flow through that interchange. So next steps, uh, again, we're, uh, planning to submit all of the comments here within the next week to CDOT. So if there is any direction from council tonight, we'll be summarizing staff comments as well as any feedback from the city council and submitting that to CDOT for their consideration. So happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Director DeAndrea. Busy as always on so many different projects. Um, any questions from my, from our council? Member Russell?
I actually just have some comments, because this was incredibly disappointing to me, because I didn't think that we got the attention that we probably needed. And it could be because there was a big turnover in staff during that time. Four years ago, I think it was, that, uh, there was a Tri-Cities meeting, um, in Sheridan. I don't remember if Inglewood hosted it or Sheridan hosted it. And they were talking about this PEL, um, study. And, um, I mean, I noticed in all the notes that the city of Littleton had, uh, them come and present to them. The Transportation Committee in Littleton had them come and visit with them. And it's kind of like, we really haven't heard anything. A- and so that's really troublesome. We get down to the point where at the end, and now we are given an opportunity for input. I, I was disappointed that the stakeholder was, uh, that filled out a survey was the president of the chamber. I, I would think that probably all of us sitting here are representatives of the citizens. The chamber president is not. I was incredibly disappointed in all of this. And, and I understand that their staff totally changed over. Sean was new, um, and you were new. So I, I don't know if that played into any of this, but that is incredibly disappointing, because I really feel like m- most of our focus was on the multimodal, when Santa Fe is really an opportunity for us. I really think we could eventually take some of the traffic off of Broadway and, and funnel it down to Santa Fe. But I just kind of feel like we're so stuck in increasing density and the multimodal piece that we've missed out on perhaps a big opportunity, because now we've missed out on this 10 years. So, thank you.
Okay. Just, just a comment about that. So communities did it a little bit differently of how they updated their councils. So I did bring this a couple of times before the city council. Littleton did take advantage of bringing the actual project team to their city council and their transportation commission. But I did present this information to ETAC as well, as well as to city council, which I think was in the memo, uh, previous council actions. So other communities did that as well, or they invited the project team in. So we could do it either way, but yeah, thank you for that feedback.
Member Woodward?
Yes, I would like to, uh, just say, this is the first time I've seen this project and, and knew about it, or since I've been on council. And I was really quite pleased with the number of top-rated roadway projects you got. On here, I mean, there's three, five, five of what, 10, something like that? Or in Inglewood or part of Inglewood. And then on multimodal, there's three of them. That's out of seven. So I was really pleased with that. And some of them are certainly a lot simpler and a lot easier, but they're not any, I mean, they're not cheap things. For example, Dartmouth or Union, those are, um, and just in looking at them and trying to understand them, they're complicated. So I was really pleased to see that. I did have the same responses. Council member Russell here regarding, I was surprised that I didn't see Inglewood on there anywhere other than the chamber meeting with them and, uh, you know, giving them their opinions and stuff, which I thought were informed and well-done, but I didn't see any others. So I was just a little surprised to go through all, all this paper and see that much, that, or that little of input from, from, uh, other than Public Works or from you. But, um, I appreciate what you've done with this, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Actually, I just got a couple of questions, uh, Director DeAndrea, regarding just some of the projects, just from my understanding. I'm still a little bit confused about the purpose of the frontage road, the Dartmouth to Harvard. What is that alleviating? I know that there's multimodal, but are they trying to get some of the southbound traffic from Santa Fe to access through there?
Correct.
To Dartmouth?
So yeah, if you, if you can, um, visualize that area, there's the, um, there's that moving company there.
There's the U-Haul, there's a...
There's a strip mall kind of a, uh...
There's also a gas station.
Gas station. So the intent would be is to, instead of having driveways that come in and out, or have right-in, right-out off of Santa Fe, is to move that traffic to a rear, basically rear-access those properties so, to eliminate some of those driveways off of Santa Fe.
Right.
Because every time there's a driveway, people slow down, there's rear-end accidents, and it just disrupts the flow.
Okay. And then, so that does make, uh, sense. And then the, at, the Hampton Avenue sidewalk, I've always been concerned about the use of that sidewalk. I know they're using it today without a sidewalk, but this is basically for the residents that are living on the west side that are in Sheridan. That's basically people that are using that to get to the light rail station. So we're going to be adding a sidewalk there. Is there anything else to kind of help the pedestrians get to the light rail station and vice versa? Because that is a very vast area.
It is, so i- it's, um, you can somewhat see it in this photo, but it says, uh, one of the boxes here says Enhanced Pedestrian Crossing Treatments at the Ramp Crossing. So the intent would be is to put up some sort of a flashing device or something that could be actuated by the pedestrians so that cars are aware that they're crossing. But then they would have to come up that sidewalk on the south side of Chuck E. Cheese, and then basically through the parking, um, garage, the top level of the parking garage to access the light rail station. So I think there's still some wayfinding or signage that we could do on our side to help people, once they get over to, or beneath, um, Santa Fe, how do they get up into the ri- light rail station?
Thank you, Director DeAndrea. Any other questions or any of the comments from council? Director DeAndrea, do you need anything else from us tonight? Any, I'm in favor of what we have presented tonight, um, including the pedestrian bicyclist grade separation. Love to see that happen sooner rather than later, so. Other than that, I'm not seeing any other comments from council, but thank you very much for the update on this. Thank you, Director DeAndrea. Uh, moving on to agenda item 1C for tonight, this is, uh, Director DeAndrea, you're still there. We're here to, uh, discuss the Organized Garbage Recycling Collection Initiative. Member Wink is not here tonight. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to make it due to, uh, medical appointment that she had earlier this morning. Last week, we delayed it just because I wanted to have this conversation as seven council members. Uh, I'll ask it again, that would still be my preference to have that conversation, just because it is a big conversation to have, and I like to have all seven. But, uh, I'll leave it to this council to decide whether or not we want to start the conversations now, or if we want to delay it until Member Wink is back and we're all present for this. So, any comments from council? Member Noonan Camp?
We deferred from Member Anderson last week, so I think that, you know, it would be fair to also defer from Member Wink to give her that same courtesy.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, Member Anderson.
What's the timeline on, on this? If we were to defer it another week, we have to, you know, if we're going to...
That's a great comment. Director DeAndrea, I believe, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, Director DeAndrea, I believe you stated that the RFPs that we received are get through the end of May.
Correct.
Um, so technically, we can bring this back as a conversation piece next week as part of our study session and just decide what direction we want to go, whether it is take the recommendation of, uh, uh, the committee or one of several other avenues from there on. So, knowing the timing on this and the fact that we are six tonight, Member Noonan Camp?
I was just gonna say, I support moving to next week, but also with the clarification, hopefully, of Member Wink, that we will be making a decision next week. I don't want to delay it unnecessarily, but if she can be here next week, I think that would be best.
And just to clarify, Member Noonan Camp, we'll give direction next week, correct? Member Anderson? Nothing to add? Everyone okay? We just delaying this topic until next, next study session? Looks like we're all in favor, I don't see any, oh, Member, uh, Woodward, sorry.
No, I, I am in favor of that.
Thank you, Member Woodward, with the mic off, but I appreciate it, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and delay this until next Monday night as part of a study session, so we'll make sure to get that added.
And thank you for delaying so I could be here too, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Member Anderson.
Glad that we can wait for Wink as well.
Thank you, Member, uh, or Director DeAndrea. So now we're calling this meeting to order. And if we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and City Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, good evening. Member Anderson?
Present.
Member Noonan Camp?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Present.
Member Wink? Member Woodward?
Present.
Mayor Sierra?
Present.
Six present and one absent, the one absent is Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, City Clerk. If, um, next up is consideration of minutes from the previous session. Any changes to the, uh, meeting from April 18th, 2022? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Thank you, Member Woodward, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you, City Clerk. Any changes to the meeting, uh, the special meeting from April 25th? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move the meeting of April 25th.
Thank you, Member Woodward, could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes.
Moving on to agenda item six, um, up first is introduction of the new Library and Cultural Arts Manager, Beth Lafferty. And Director Underhill? Good evening.
I'm Director Christina Underhill, uh, for Parks, Rec, Library and Golf, and see Beth down here, I know she was in the library, they don't close till 7:30. So, uh, Beth Lafferty is joining us from Henderson, Nevada, in their library district there. She has 16-plus years of experience running libraries. Um, she's dealt with many of the same issues that we see in our library here in Inglewood. And so we're really happy to have her, um, excited to have her on board. Uh, she started last Monday and has hit the ground running, so we're, um, pleased to have her. And, let's see her down here, she must got stuck down there. So I'll be sure to bring her around and introduce you, uh, in the near future.
Thank you, Director Underhill. Uh, Member Noonan Camp, keep a nice little, uh, overview of the, uh, of our new, uh, arts, uh, or, yep, Miss, yeah, Miss Lafferty, a long title there, so. Um, so no, I appreciate it, too bad that we're not able to make our acquaintance tonight, but really happy to have her on board. Any other comments from council regarding Miss Lafferty's appointment? Seeing none, Director Underhill, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, up next, I believe, is, uh, gonna be Director Power here to introduce our new planning manager, Brian Isom. And Director Power, remind me if I have the pronunciation of Mr.?
I'll clarify that, because it's, uh, it's an interesting last name. Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council, Brad Power, Community Development Director. I know that Brian Isom is in the building and hopefully on his way down. I think the, your meeting accelerated just a little bit in the last few minutes, so I thought hopefully he's on his way. Um, Brian is also in Week Two, uh, with us, and he's also hit the ground running and is delving into some of the project issues and meeting with our staff and, and others. And he joins us from the city of Lubbock, Texas, where he previously served as their planning director. And I believe he has arrived, so I'll let him introduce himself to you as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Brian Isom, the new planning manager. Um, I'm really looking forward to hitting the ground running, working on your Code Next project in the housing assessment study that the, the Community Development Department has already started.
Mr. Isom, welcome. We're gonna start you on something small before moving you onto bigger things, so. Uh, really welcome you to the city and really look forward to working with you, especially with the Code Next and everything else that we got going on in terms of development here in the city.
Thank you.
Anyone else wanna say anything for Mr. Isom? Mr. Isom, thank you very much, welcome to our city and look forward to working with you even further.
Thank you, I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is recognition of Director Power, Mr. Hollensworth, and Ms. Benton for receiving the 2022 Governor's Award, uh, winner for the Road to Recovery. Um, this is in response to the COVID-19 recovery. Uh, Director Power, I'll leave it to you to speak more on the, the award, congratulations.
Thank you very much, good evening again, Mayor, Members of Council. We are very pleased to announce that we did, uh, two weeks ago, receive the Downtown Colorado Inc., uh, Award for Best Response, Best Community and Business Response for the COVID-19 Pandemic. And we're here to, um, indicate to you that this was probably one of the most singular things that any of us have done in our career. Uh, it was incredibly gratifying to be able to help businesses in our community through an unprecedented and very challenging time. So we're very proud of that work. The three of us are kind of the tip of the spear in terms of the programs that we put together, but by all means, we did not do it by ourselves. We had uh several of our external partners involved uh throughout the course of the two-year uh mission that we did these uh projects through, including Arapahoe Douglas County Works for coordinating the regional response for which we are a part, Arapahoe Community College for doing our career boot camp for forty folks in Inglewood to retrain and get uh new job skills, and then finally the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce for their coordination with us in terms of bringing some of the projects to fruition or the grant programs to fruition, and also the marketing them and coordinating them with the uh community response. Shifting internally very briefly, I I also want to recognize that uh there were a large number of other staff members and departments involved in this effort over the course of the last two years, and I just briefly want to say a little bit about what they did. Finance provided all the grant processing and business eligibility verifications for our programs. The Clerk's Office did our liquor licensing verifications for that element of our grant programs. Communications worked with us very closely on marketing and communicating uh through social media about the availability of our programs. Uh the police, specifically the Fire Marshal, conducted all the inspections for our outdoor heating elements that we uh provided grants for. Public Works did the right-of-way inspections for all the outdoor seating grants that were funded. Parks Recreation Library and Golf, very early on, provided outdoor seating and equipment, and also the moving of that uh equipment. And then finally, City's or City Attorney's Office obviously provided oversight in terms of the legal issues for all the programs. So on behalf of myself, Darren and Nancy, we just want to thank you. We don't have a physical award because we are understanding that that's hung up in supply chain issues, um but eventually that will arrive and I will find a suitable location for that, but thank you for the recognition this evening.
And we'll meet again at that point, and Director Power, to you and your staff, you know, this is a well-deserved award for you. I've always was really proud of the work that you did over the two years over COVID, obviously ongoing as well past COVID, but the way that you guys reacted, how quick you were to react to just the needs of businesses, but also pivot when you had a grant in place, but you heard from the businesses that they needed something different. You were able to pivot on a dime as well, so really appreciate all the work that you guys did during that time, and again, congratulations on the award.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Member Russell?
Actually, I would also like to say thank you to staff for how hard you worked, but I also would be derelict if we did not give credit to the ACE Committee also, who was a group of volunteers that came up with a lot of ideas, and each of those committee members worked very hard too, and thank you Darren for working together with that committee, but I greatly appreciate all that city staff did. Thank you very much.
Now the applause for the team, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto item number four, John, uh Mr. Vogberl is here to introduce a nonprofit transportation planning organization, Transportation Solutions Arapahoe County, that focuses on the needs of seniors, the disabled, and low-income residents. Director Power?
I apologize, Mr. Vogberl is not quite here, so what we'll plan to do is send you some information in your update. It's just the communication of the existence of a of a group that's um recently been impaneled, and that was the the reason for his uh short presentation tonight to introduce it, so we'll do that via other means.
Thank you Director Power, messed up the timing of everything, everyone expected us to speak bell single holler, so apologies for that. Um moving on to item E under six, proclamation declaring Public Service Recognition Week twenty twenty-two. Uh whereas Americans are served every day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels who supply contin- uh continuity to our democratic society, and whereas public employees and community vol- volunteers serve in areas such as health, education, public safety, the arts, the environment, finance, infrastructure, human resources, community planning, recreation, and more, and whereas many many public servants, including military personnel, first responders, healthcare workers, and others risk their lives every day in service to the people of the United States, and whereas the over seven hundred full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees of the city of Inglewood are committed to exhibiting the highest standards of professional excellence, creativity, skill, and customer service, and whereas the dedic- dedicated elected officials, board, and commission members and volunteers play roles in developing, analyzing, and advising on policy and are integral to the advancement of the quality of life enjoyed by the citizens of Inglewood, now therefore be it proclaimed that I Othaniel Sierra Mayor of the city of Inglewood and the city council hereby proclaim Public Service Recognition Week as the first week of May in the city of Inglewood, and urge all citizens to appreciate the contributions of those who chose public service. City Manager, anything else you want to add, but?
Thank you Mayor, uh just to let you know, we um today had cookies and punch in the community room and uh thanked various public uh employees here in the city, and um we're also gonna be having other recognition weeks throughout this month, May is our busiest month, we have Police Appreciation Week, we have City Clerks uh Appreciation Week, um so a number of um different folks that we're gonna be recognizing throughout the month, but we appreciate the proclamation, thank you.
Thank you City Manager. Um moving on to item F under six, proclamation declaring Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month twenty twenty-two. I'll read the proclamation, whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed in May to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions of Asian Pacific Americans to American history, society, and culture, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month originated as a co- congressional bill in June of nineteen seventy-seven, on March twenty-eighth nineteen seventy-nine, President Carter issued Presidential Proclamation forty-six fifty, proclaiming the week beginning on May fourth nineteen seventy-nine as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week, and whereas on May first two thousand nine, President Obama issued President Presidential Proclamation eighty-three sixty-nine, proclaiming May two thousand nine as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islander men and women are leaders in all aspects of American life such as government, science, medicine, and just industry, military service, the arts, education, and sports, and whereas we recognize the significant contributions, accomplishments, and leadership of generations of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to our country, the state of Colorado, and the city of Inglewood, as we continue to work to create a more supportive, inclusive, and equitable community that fully embraces all individuals of Asian descent. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I Othaniel Sierra Mayor of the city of Inglewood and the city council hereby proclaim May two thousand twelve, or excuse me, May twenty twenty-two as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Inglewood. Thank you for that, to staff and to everyone involved in getting that proclamation ready, thank you. And now we're moving on to recognition of scheduled public comment. Mayor Pro Tem?
May I suggest a break before we start taking public comment? I'll be a much more effective listener before the forty-five minutes if I have a break.
Sounds good, we'll go ahead and take a ten-minute break, we'll be, we'll meet back again at seven twenty-seven. Thank you everyone, this meeting's back in order, uh we're moving on to agenda item seven, this is recognition. We're now on to agenda item seven, recognition of scheduled public comment. Uh the deadline to speak up for uh scheduled public comment is Wednesday by five PM prior to the meeting. Through the City Clerk's Office, this is an opportunity for the public to address City Council. There is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue, and please limit your presentation to five minutes. And just as an aside, I do want to remind everyone that tonight, everyone here is to be heard, uh so we are asking that everybody be respectful and uh, you know, demand that all the the respect for the five minutes when the speakers are speaking. Uh please hold off on any applause or any type of reaction uh after any speaker speaks tonight. We do want each speaker uh to address council, and we don't want them to feel any apprehension towards, you know, using their time to actually speak towards council. One other thing that I do want to mention is we want to make sure that everyone directs their comments to council. We are decis- we are a body that makes a decision. As a whole, we are the ones that are directing staff, so any, the reason why this uh topic is, or at least the majority of uh people tonight are probably gonna be here to speak on Single Hauler, council was here to direct uh staff to look into the issue itself. So it was this decision by this council because of public comment, because of the comment by citizens that they want us to look into this issue. I don't think I have anything to add, or one other thing, I guess the one thing is that obviously tonight we were gonna have a study session topic to discuss the direction of where to go with Single Hauler. We delayed it until May ninth or, yeah, May ninth, uh next Monday night, but no decision has been made on the topic. We are gonna be discussing it again next Monday night uh at six PM. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. First up is Jan Wiper, uh excuse me, Wiper, any what uh resident to address council? Good evening, Ms. Wiper.
Good evening, I'm glad to be here, um and you want to know where I live again?
Oh yes, please, uh say your name and your crossroads or your address.
It's Jan Wiper, and I'm off of Federal in Bellevue.
Thank you.
So we're the the Inglewood stepchild is what I've heard us called. I I'm disappointed that you didn't have the discussion on Single Hauler tonight because I was hoping that I could. I'm disappointed that you didn't have the discussion on Single Hauler tonight because I was hoping that I could respond to some comments that were made during that. I did hear some things that I thought were appropriate and follow right through to that when council was discussing whether to raise taxes or whether to do this new project or that new project. It came to mind that every time somebody almost walks in here and says, "Let's do this," everybody goes, "Yay, let's do this, let's do this." And here it is, two years, three years, let's see, three, maybe four years later, and we're still going, "Yay, let's do Single Hauler trash." To me, it's a waste of time and energy. And, you know, I was talking to somebody that is on a city council, and they were talking to their public utilities person, and their public utilities person said, "Don't want anything to do with that because once government comes in and starts working with it, the cost goes up, and the cost goes up." And pretty soon, instead of two people that were being talked about being involved from it, then you add another one, and then you add another one. And so what my point is, is that I think this would be a very good time to say, "We don't need a new project. We don't need a new cost center. We don't need more people. And let's look at inflation and let people find ways that they can do this on their own." Because all that's going to happen and what's already happened, because Inglewood has had people out there telling folks to not take new trash people, customers. And, you know, that's not right. This hasn't been passed. And when Inglewood is stepping in and telling people not to take new trash customers, what is going on? That's not okay. You know, let's stop it. Stop it. You've already, cost increases in the cost of trash for individuals. It needs to stop. Then, how much time do I have left? I can't see.
Two and a half.
Oh, there it is. Okay. So then the other thing I want to say is, you know, this isn't supposed to be about anger. It's supposed to be about working together to find the best solution for everybody, not egos. And I think a lot of this with Single Hauler trash is egos, is how I see it. It's my viewpoint. I want it my way. I want these results, and I'm not going to listen to anybody else. Because when you're looking at what the one survey was, 51%, it'd increase the cost today. Just give it a little while. And that's just if I use the containers you want. If I want to haul my waste, guard waste, then it's going to cost more. So maybe, maybe it's just time to get the egos out and say, "We're done." The other thing, I didn't write everything out, but the other thing I wanted to say was, I have a friend that actually came to work for me under, I didn't know her before, in accounting. And she, when she came to work, she had learned to speak English. She got her degree, her four-year degree in accounting. She became, you know, very good at what she did, and then she moved on to somewhere else. When she got her citizenship, my accounting department went and watched that process, and it was pretty cool. But the other thing I want to say is, one thing that's important to her today is voting. The right to vote is one of the most important things for her. And that means the right of representation, not somebody saying, "This is what I think is right." It's representing the people in your community. I know another man who came from Russia when the walls came down, and he said, "You don't know what it's like over there because they tell you where to live. Who's going to take your trash? How much trash you can have?" He didn't say that. But what kind of apartment you're going to have and what you're going to live in. And I think, you know, this is kind of going down that road, guys. And we don't want, I don't want to be Russia. I don't want to be China. I want to be the United States of America with some freedoms. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Ms. Wipert, thank you very much for your speech tonight. Any comments from council? Seeing none, Ms. Wipert. Thank you very much. Up next, the city clerk, did we remove the second person to speak? Unable to make it? Okay. Up next is Ms. Idemay Nickel, Inglewood resident to address council. And just for background, city council member Nunikep is going to be giving a response to public comment tonight. Good evening, Ms. Nickel.
Good evening, Mayor.
State your name and cross street and your address.
Idemay Nickel, and I live in District 4.
Ms. Nickel, could you just give us approximation on your cross streets or your address?
I live at 4740 South Lepin.
Thank you, Ms. Nickel.
Okay. Good evening. Conflict of interest and ethics seem to be tied up in the issues of single hauler trash. The public evaluates the performance of its elected officials to a great extent by what happens at council meetings and citizens form their opinions of city government. Remember and please keep in mind that city councils' responsibility is to be nonpartisan and nonpolitical. Issues often arise during a councilperson's work that may create a potential conflict of interest. There are rules regarding how a councilperson should react to a potential conflict of interest. The councilperson or person should disclose the fact to citizens of what they have been involved in and then abstain from voting in council on that issue, such as the single hauler trash. People would respect your honesty. Please, council, don't downgrade the legitimacy of citizens' voices to be heard, and please listen to what we have to say. You asked for and campaigned for the position on city council to listen to the citizens and to help guide the city, not to take it over with just your beliefs. This can be a serious problem. Sometimes, after folks get elected, citizens are pushed to the side or overlooked because of personal desires on behalf of council. At one time, citizens were allowed to speak for 10 minutes and unscheduled for five. Those were long meetings, although there wasn't near as much on the agenda to cover. Democracy stands for "of the people, by the people, and for the people." A system of governance where equality of opportunity, liberty, justice, and freedom are guaranteed. We have the Freedom of Information Act signed by President Lyndon Johnson on July 4th, 1966. We have the Ethics in Government Act of 1978, and we have the Open Public Meeting Act and the Sunshine Law. This is a reminder for all of us Americans in office or out of office that we all should look back at our American history. It is taken out of our book that is being taken out of our books in our schools. Reread and review our Declaration of Independence, which was followed by the Constitution, and in our Bill of Rights. These were all, have stood the test of time and will remain unless we destroy it. There's a number of things that I found of conflict of interest for council members and disclosure requirements. There's some good things and some things that are not so good. I just will list a few here. Council members are under a continuing obligation to report any actual or potential conflict of interest and must report promptly any conflicts that have not been previously disclosed. If an individual has reasonable cause to believe that others have failed to disclose a conflict of interest, he or she should inform the rest of the board or committee chair and the council's general counsel to discuss the issue to determine the appropriate steps to protect council. Council board members must annually disclose in full the name of each business or nonprofit organization that has or reasonably expect to have any material interest in any proposed or existing contract, transition, or arrangement or arrangement with council. There are a lot more policies, but I don't have time. So I want to end with, please consider dropping the issue of single hauler trash. Look at the many people you will make happy instead of dividing us. This is not a win-win situation for our, this is not a win-win situation for our citizens or for council either. And it's putting a hardship on many seniors and also many younger folks who are just living paycheck to paycheck and wondering and hoping how to support their families and what is coming next. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nickel. Any questions from council? Mayor Potem.
Ms. Nickel, I have some concern about the way your message tonight opens up. Conflict of interest and ethics seem to be tied to the issues of single hauler trash. Can you please elaborate? Because it sounds like you're alleging that a member of this body has a conflict of interest of some sort. And we would like to hear what that is, or at least I would, if there is something being alleged.
Well, that's just some rumors that's going around, and I would rather not speak about that until I get more information on it.
Okay, fair enough. So you have no specific allegation to make tonight?
Not specifically.
Okay.
That I mean, that I wanted to be sure of before I put them out.
Any other questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Nickel. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to next agenda item, no applause tonight, please. Next up is Ms. Marcy Brown, Inglewood resident to address council. Good evening, Ms. Brown. If you could just state your name and your address or cross street.
My name is Marcy Brown. I live off of Sherman and Cornell. My comment tonight may sound harsh, and it's certainly not going to please everyone here. I don't have the eloquence some speakers do, but all I can do is tell my truth about what I have witnessed and experienced in my own words in regards to the single hauler trash issue. On April 18th, at the last council meeting, the mayor made a comment that the public should not be criticizing staff, but rather criticized the council because staff and committees were just doing the work the council asked for. So what it sounds like to me is that staff has been directed by council to take action on single hauler trash. And is this not a violation of the Charter Number 32, powers expressly prohibited to council? And it seems to me that the public has every right to criticize staff when they aren't doing their job. The city's government, whether it's staff or council, seem to be under the impression that they are in charge of our town and can make any decisions they want regardless of public opinion. We, the taxpayers, pay all your salaries, and that makes us your boss. And if there was incompetence and bias on this trash committee, then I think someone has to answer for that. The Director of Public Works and some members of council have-
Ms. Brown, can you please stop mentioning other members of city staff as part of this conversation that's directed towards council?
Well, I can, I don't understand what you're saying to me.
You could continue, Ms. Brown.
And if there was incompetence and bias on this trash committee, then someone has to answer for that. The Director of Public Works and some members of council have attached themselves with a non-government organization as indicated in this document. Since so many people have access to this document, do you really want to move forward with the single hauler trash? Because these papers are damaging not only for staff but also for council. Regarding the trash license for waste management, in the mayor-manager meeting held on April 20th, it was said that after a resident requested a list of trash hauler license, which I did on March 15th, that waste management completed their renewals the day after I made that request. I guess timing is everything. But the stories here don't match up because someone else did a core request on the same topic on March 25th, and waste management still was not on that list. And I don't understand how this could be an oversight of the Public Works Department. March 29th was our last trash meeting. The city manager made a point of attending that specific meeting. In the past, he never made an appearance before. Even though he was pleasant, his watching over us was to put pressure on the committee to wrap things up. If anyone listens to the first 10 minutes of that meeting, you can make up your own mind. And what was the purpose of hurrying us up? I guess because the RFP was coming due. Now, after that meeting, staff has said they could extend the deadline, and we still don't have prices locked in. As I said at the last council meeting, if council or staff continue to put certain people from the same group on committees, commissions, and boards, it could be seen as collusion. In fact, members on the trash committee didn't even hide the fact that they were in favor of the single hauler trash issue because they all voted together in a block. I will clarify that this was after Steve Ward left as the chair. So if staff or council doesn't believe in transparency and fairness, then you should either be terminated or resign from your position. This is my opinion as a taxpayer, and that's all I've got.
Any questions from council? Member Woodward.
Yes, you held up a document. What was that document?
It's a document from a website that talks about, I'm not going to name names, but council and members of staff.
I'm sorry, it was a staff report or what was it?
It was from a website.
From a website, from our website?
No, from the special group website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Mayor Potem?
Let's, I feel comfortable hearing the name of this group. I suspect I know, but I think that would inform the conversation a bit more. What is the group that you're talking about?
Case.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it?
Any other questions from council? Ms. Brown, thank you for your time. Up next is Mr. Chris Dewis, Inglewood resident to address council. Good evening, Mr. Dewis. If you could just state your name and your address or cross street.
Good afternoon. Chris Dewis, Lincoln and Shenango, District 3. Funny thing, people have been cheering and clapping since the beginning of time. They cheered and clapped for Caesar. If we clapped for you, you would love it. In the past, and it has happened, but when we cheer and clap for ourselves, you want to shut us down. Let me open by saying we have the right not only to voice our opinions, but we have the right to clap and cheer. It's freedom of speech and freedom of expression. That's a constitutional right. Pretty soon, you won't let us speak at all, trying to control the people just like Hitler did. You were elected public servants. You took an oath. You are here to represent the people, not to dictate to the people. If a citizen doesn't want one trash hauler, the decision should be, should not be forced upon them. If a citizen doesn't want to use a service, then why should that, why should they be forced to pay for it? You can't force this. I've watched many councils come and go, wasting lots of taxpayers' money on bad decisions. Inglewood Trolley Center, the Inglewood Duck Pond in Hampton, selling the train depot for pennies on the dollar when you had an existing contract for more money. The list is long. I'm here because I can't stand watching you guys make more bad decisions for the citizens. Putting trash cans in front of my house is logistically a very bad idea. I'm not going to put them in the street and roll them back into my yard. Parking is bad enough without trash cans out front. People leave trash hanging out of their cans all the time, all the time. Why would I want my streets to look like trash? It's bad enough when you let the homeless trash out our city. Now, you want the citizens to do the same. You're making it easier for homeless to dig in the trash, just like they did on the Platte River before citizens stood up and complained. City staff and employees drove by that mess for over a year not doing anything about it. Our streets will become even more of a ghetto than it is now. Now you want disabled and elderly people to pay an added cost for door-to-curb service. These people- These people are most vulnerable and live on fixed incomes. Code enforcement is on a reactive status. Most people are afraid to call code enforcement as they get backlash results. Same with the police department, yet they want more money. The homeless is out of control and you want us to trust you. Littleton doesn't have these issues. Why don't you take notes from them? They don't have single, single hauler trash. You just spend millions improving stormwater pipes under my streets, but the inlets are the same size and will fill with trash from the streets. Because, because code does not and won't enforce people to clean around the trash cans. Have you driven down the alleys lately? That's what the streets will look like. There will be trash floating down the gutters that was witnessed in the twenty-eighteen flood and the twenty-nineteen storm. They are a disaster, trash everywhere. I'm appalled that one of you would even come up with the idea. It's not for you to blow more taxpayers' dollar. It's time for the people's voices to be heard. How can council member Sierra Wink and Martinez push for a council vote instead of a ballot initiative? This shows conflict of interest by a non-government organization or NGO for short. For these reasons, anyone who is friends or affiliated with CASE or its members should abstain any vote. Like the majority of the people, I don't want trash in the front of my home. That's why we all have alleys. Putting trash in front of our houses is like putting your underwear on backwards. Taxation without representation.
Thank you, Mr. Dewis. Any comments from council? Seeing none, Mr. Dewis, thank you for your time. Please, no applause. Uh, up next is Ms. Cian Dickerson to address council. Ms. Dickerson, if you could just state your name and your address or your cross streets?
What?
If you could just state your name and your address or cross street?
Cian Dickerson, Bates and Logan. It is absurd what you are attempting to do to the citizens of Inglewood in pushing single hauler trash. One size does not fit all. It does not fit me and it does not fit many citizens. The reason government exists is to protect the rights of citizens, particularly our property rights. You all took an oath of office to do so. You are not our masters. You are our employees. When the biogas project was proposed, it was touted as a major revenue stream, at least one million a year. But that has proven false. CASE took credit for getting this through. And a council and current CASE member campaigned twice on this issue, even though the plant was not operational, on the claim that it had already removed five thousand metric tons of carbon and one million to Inglewood starting in twenty-nineteen. CASE members claimed that the mayor at the time told them that the project had already earned one point four million, again before the plant was operational. It is in the records of CASE and published records of the, of the campaigns. Most recently, it was announced that instead of repaying, repaying our four million dollar investment in eight, uh, in three years, it would take eight years. Because we are only getting net around five hundred thousand per the manager, not one point four million. In the meantime, our utility bills have been doubled, in large part to force the citizens to pay back the four million dollars into the sewer fund. We were lied to and misled and still don't know how much this project will net Inglewood or how much it costs to operate and what it actually does. Simultaneously, city manager Keck and his new Public Works hire started pushing the, this project with CASE in twenty-eighteen, the single hauler trash, evidenced by the meeting notes of CASE citing the Public Works Director and certain council members' involvement with CASE. For example, the Public Works Director spoke at a CASE meeting in November of twenty-eighteen, touting her experience and knowledge of the process to get single hauler trash installed and why it was needed in Inglewood. A direct quote from that meeting, "We know there will be some resistance from certain citizens. So we need to think of how to frame this effort to held that off." A list of ideas follows, all of which are bogus and all of which made it into the Public Works Director's memos and reports as advantages and justifications. Over the next three years, this was consistently advanced. I have lost trust in the integrity of council and staff as a result of the thoughtless and rash decision spending taxpayer funds and taxing us to make up for their prior irrational decisions, both overt and covert. Even to the point of denying our right to speak and express our approval or disapproval. Who directed the city clerk to dictate what we could speak about or when or get cut off? It is absurd to continue to assert single hauler trash is necessary. And it is absurd that we should be forced to pay for so-called service and be taxed for it. It is taxation. It's a workaround of tabor. Stop, if you truly want to reduce trash and encourage recycling, this is not the way to do it. No trash hauler collects the bulk of plastic. And as we now know, density is not the solution to pollution, but it's the cause. And recycling is not the solution to plastic, nor the solution to reduce trash. One to three of you have apparent conflicts of interest and probably should recuse yourself from any discussion and, or vote in putting forward single hauler trash. Stop wasting our tax dollars. Stop putting the city into ever more debt. Stop trying to gaslight us. This is an evidence of a twenty-six gallon... I can't move those things by myself. You see, I can barely look over. This is my trash can. It takes me two months to put trash in here. I recycle.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. You have your five minutes. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Ms. Dick, Ms. Dickerson, thank you very much for your time tonight. Up next is Ms. Kim Wright, Inglewood resident to address council. Good evening, Ms. Wright. If you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Hi there, I'm Kim Wright, Tufts and Julian. After repeated appearances, city council and the facts showing single hauler isn't for the people of Inglewood, it's time to put the issue to rest. There has not, nor will be there, an RFP that will meet the needs of the people. There's no multi-size containers, only one container. Some families need more. No yard waste, mandatory recycling. We have cited recycling doesn't work. In fact, California City Attorney General Bob Bonta is investigating companies regarding misleading consumers on recycling because ninety percent of all plastics end up in landfills. Waste management will only provide alley service to its current customers. Republic will impose service fees if we opt out on top of the city's two dollar, two dollar mandatory fee. Some have said the trucks on their, trucks are on their street every day. But per city ordinance, trucks can only pick up on Monday and Wednesday, except for on holidays. Noise and air pollution. Republic rep at the last city council meeting confirmed that we have, um, excuse me, what we have said, that trucks use truck, um, trash to gas or compress natural gas. This all but eliminates noise and air pollution. So there is an air and noise pollution. Street damage is caused by the trash trucks coming from all over this other cities, um, going to the Union Station, not picking up our trash. Going to single hauler, trash trucks will be heavier and will cause road damage to our streets. Large number of us are paying forty-two percent or less than what we will at the lowest RPF starting rate. An overwhelming number of your constituents have been opposed to single hauler. At the, at these meetings, why are we continuing this? How much money has been spent that had, have, could been spent on other issues that have been addressed just tonight and previous weeks? And we've repeatedly asked for this to be squashed or put to the vote. Now is time for this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Any questions from council? Member Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple points to the recommendations.
Actually, Member Woodward, do you have questions or comments?
No, I don't. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Wright, thank you for your time tonight.
Yep.
Up next is Mr. Kevin Wright, Inglewood's resident to address council. Good evening, Mr. Wright.
Good evening.
If you could just state your name.
I live on Julian and Tufts Street. Um, tonight, I'd like to discuss something a little different than voicing my complaints and joining, uh, and pointing out all the flaws a single hauler trash has to offer. You guys have been listening to this for the last four years. Same thing over and over. I looked in the two thousand nineteen survey results and saw exactly what we're seeing tonight. I didn't get a twenty-twenty-two survey report, so I couldn't tell you what's in that one. And I couldn't find it on your online website either. Elected officials, you were represented, uh, elected to represent the citizens of Inglewood to hear our suggestions to make a better city and also to hear our grievances when we have something was wrong in our city. Ladies before me have really nailed it. I mean, they put it right out there. There's not really much more I can say than what they have said. You know, it's funny that RID, um, was talking about two eighty-five. I was driving down two eighty-five the other day going to work. I saw eight waste management trunks in a row. Five of them just happened to be running on trash to gas. The other three are running on compressed natural gas. But my problem was all eight of them were in the same lane, toe to toe, back to back, going out to Highlands Ranch. Now, I look at where the Union Station's at. I look at where they left, where they went and where they're coming back to. And all those roads that they're driving on are being damaged. So I ask you, why are they not being taxed? Why are they not being charged for destroying our roads? They're making millions of dollars, but they're out there destroying our roads. Like I said, I saw eight of them in a row. I have pictures on my phone. I'll show every one of you right now. My next point is contracts. I've been signing contracts since I was eighteen years old. That was thirty-nine years ago. I've entered in several contracts for services, buying cars, buying houses, getting cell phones, internet, everything else. And when I entered those contracts, I was happy and I felt good knowing what those contracts said, that I had the right to back out of that contract if I didn't feel good about the service provided to me. I didn't feel like I was under duress or being pushed into something. I felt that I was entering a contract on my own free will. As a contractor, when I write a contract to my people, the very last two pages I have to provide them is called a notice of right to cancel under Regulation Z, twelve CFR two-two-six-one-five-B, and also a notice of rescission. I give them enough time to go over the contract to secure the funds and make sure that they're happy with what we're going to do for them. Oh, thank you very much. What people are going, what I'm going to do and provide for them. And if they have any discrepancies, I never want them to feel like they're signing a contract with me under duress. I want them to be comfortable, so I follow the law. Time is dressed here at the city council meetings. I feel that not only am I being forced into a contract under duress, but every citizen that has voiced their opposition to single haul, single trash hauler is also being forced under duress to enter into a contract. Is that fair to us to force us into a contract that we do not agree with? I don't think any of you would want to join into a contract you don't agree with. It's not fair. When you threaten us with fines if we opt out, the knowledge that our homes can have liens placed upon them if we don't pay the bills, because we don't pay our utilities, you lien our houses. And if we don't comply, it seems to be tactics used by corporations to get what they want and forcing us into a contract under duress that we do not consent to. We do not consent. Thank you.
Mr. Wright, thank you very much for your comments tonight. Any questions from council? Seeing none, Mr. Wright, thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Ms. Danielle Carr, Inglewood resident will address council regarding single hauler. Good evening, Ms. Carr. If you could just state your name and your address or cross street.
Danielle Carr, Galapago and Leighton. So I do agree with Ida May. She brought up issues about us being a democracy. And if we indeed live in a democracy, then the power of the majority arises from the fact that every individual is politically the equal of every other individual. So then the greatest power will always be the largest number of individuals who combine their strengths to act together. Normally, that's called a majority. We pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. In a republic, power is held by the people and their representatives. Are you, Rita, Jim, Cheryl, who's not here, Othaniel, Joe, Steve, Chelsea, are you representing us, the majority? Let me read to you the thoughts of my seventeen-year-old daughter when I asked her to write what she thinks about the changes to our trash situation. Mind you, she's often the one to put out the trash on Tuesdays. And I told her she could say what she wanted. We live in a democracy and the people have had a choice on what is best for their families. It may not seem like an important issue to you or to others, whether we all use the same trash company or not, but it is important. It becomes about more than just trash when the freedom to choose is taken away and we are told that the ones in higher power decide what is best for the community without even consulting the ones in the community first. My family has used waste management for the past twenty-two years. We trust them and are able to keep our trash in the alleyway, which is very convenient for us due to not being able to haul huge trash bins through the side of our house. If we had to put our trash in the front of our house, we would need to go out through the alleyway and around multiple houses before getting to our front yard. Our house attaches to the houses next to us. Okay, I showed you those pictures two weeks ago. This is not easy or convenient if we forget that it is trash day. Can you imagine my kids having to do that? We all deserve a say on what you are voting on. My family has to live in our house, not you. Why should you get to decide our living conditions when it does not affect you? The community has a say on the things that affect our living conditions. Okay, that was my daughter. So again, I ask you, are you representing us, the majority? We are tired of coming here to talk about our trash. And as the other gentleman mentioned, even our laundry. But I will keep coming here as long as you continue to consider violating our individual freedoms. Please focus on replacing and adding trash cans around Bellevue Park. That is a much more pressing issue. The majority of your neighbors is asking you to stop this initiative. You have the power to do that. If you do not, we won't stop either. It is said you can't fight city hall, so please change that stereotype and act on our behalf. I'm against single hauler no matter how much it's revised. And I'm sure all of us who have spoke tonight feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Please hold your applause. Any comments from council? Seeing none, Ms. Carr, thank you very much for your time tonight. And that now concludes scheduled public comments. We are moving on to unscheduled- And that now concludes scheduled public comments. We are moving on to unscheduled public comment. Same rules apply, uh, but you are limited to three minutes tonight. Up first is Ivan Irwin, um, to speak about single hauler.
Ivan Irwin, forty twenty-five South Jason Street in District Three. That's our legal address where we vote from. Uh, I'm against a single hauler. Think there are lots of things against it, but we are snowbirds, so we spend our winters in Southern Nevada, where we have to pay republic service to pick up our trash even though we're not there. So we pay them for six months to drive by our property and wait, you know, they don't wait. They don't stop to pick up trash either. If, if this, if this comes through, it'd be kind of nice if public service gets this contract and we can pay them for six months summer or in the winter for not picking up any trash. So, anyway, I'm against it. Thank you.
Mr. Irwin, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Mr. Irwin? Seeing none, Mr. Irwin, thank you for coming tonight. Up next is, uh, Mary Regan, uh, to discuss trash. Good evening, Ms. Regan.
Good evening.
If you could state your name and your address or cross street.
My name is Mary Regan, and I am at, um, forty-nine eighty-five South Delaware Street, Blinky's Old House. I believe everybody that's here knows where Blinky's house is. So, um, I would like to just, I've always told my kids to pick and choose their battles, and, um, I don't like one when it's taken away from any form of my freedom, my freedom to choose. The proposal is going to be bringing everything to curbside to me. Um, I work for Excel. I am an emergency response person, so I work all hours of the night. And it is a security issue to me. If my trash is laid out front, everybody that drives by knows no one is home at my house. That then is an object of, same reason why I wouldn't drive my Excel truck home. I didn't want anybody to know that that is a house where, you know, the company I worked for. Um, the other thing is, have you guys thought about the, um, wildlife? In the alley and the, around all trash, you have rats, you have raccoons. They all can carry rabies. What happens when the ci- citizens start getting bitten because of the trash, because you're coming home at all hours of night, and that's when those little vermin's are out? And, um, also, you, we have the homeless going around. They do not, they want to go through the trash. They just pick it up and they throw it at large. The wind isn't particular either on what it does with the trash. It knocks it off and goes down, and I go up and down the alley picking up the trash because I don't want to bring the unwanted visitors. So I think, um, it, this needs to be put to, um, the ballot and let the citizens decide. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Regan. Uh, any questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Regan, thank you for coming. Uh, up next is Mary Colletti. I always mispronounce your last name. Thank you, City Clerk. And Mary, please correct me on the, uh, pronunciation of your last name as well.
Mary Colletti.
Colletti. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. My name is Mary Colletti. I live at, uh, Inca and Inglewood Parkway. I want to thank you all for spending countless hours here and being representative of the citizens. I do want to say that I do take that statement very seriously. And when I was campaigning for city, uh, for city council, I had an interesting conversation with an individual that was homebound, which I totally related to. She didn't even know I was in a wheelchair. But she said, I have a, a trash company that understands my needs. They come up and get my trash if it's not out. There is no way that that's going to happen. I don't, can you guys ensure that's going to happen, or are you guys going to take out people's trash for them? That's my question to you. I also, when I was coming back from a Denver Health appointment, uh, three weeks ago, I saw only trash up by Denver Health. I didn't see anybody sleeping there. My thing, one of the things I've noticed is by Kaufman's, the big and tall store, that's, it's, it's now a camp for people. Let's go ahead and clean up that camp. Let's throw away that trash before we start to decide what people have to do, the citizens have to do with their trash. Let's go ahead and take care of this. I thank you. And I, I, I come, I don't come out very much at night because if you guys go out by the duck pond in dusk, or my, one of my favorite places to visit is live music at Brewability. It, it, it's, it's very alarming. On my, I was going to have a cheat day before I started the carnivore diet. TMI, I know. But I love the gallows lobster tails. On the way there, I met four people that were altered. On the way back, I met four people and one with their hands down their pants. Do we really want that in our city? And we're worried about people's trash and, and making that decision for them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Colletti, for your comments tonight. Any questions from council? Uh, Member Russell.
Ms. Colletti, did you call the police when you encountered those people?
I did not. It's, it's an, it's a basically every time I go out kind of thing right now. I have had an aide who I, I run my own home health care for myself through the state. I have an old, a home health aide who had an altered person come to her, see her, go down to her car. He beelined for her, and then he, he pulled on her car door. Then he pulled on the other car door, so she pulled out. She's had her car tire like slashed. One of the, the, the tire place said it was slashed. I don't feel safe in this city anymore. I, I'm going to ask, what are you guys going to do about that trash?
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions, excuse me? Seeing none, Ms. Colletti, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is, is there, Mr. Anthony Flute? And I'm sorry, I may have mispronounced your last name.
Good evening. Anyway.
If you could just state your name, sir, and your name and your address or cross street.
Okay. My name is Anthony Plute, and my wife is Anna Plute, and we live right off of Lowell and Monmouth Bellevue. We're in that far corner, right off of Littleton. City of Littleton. Anyway, I want to be able to choose whatever trash service I want and whatever part I choose. A single trash hauler would amount to a monopoly. They seemed to me at one time it was, and they broke up this monopoly. And they let everybody and their brother start coming in and having a trash service in our neighborhood, which we had quite a few. Because I can go back fifty-four years in naming these different trash haulers. But anyway, right now, I'm just talking about my, uh, that you can charge whatever price that they want if you're under a single hauler. Most citizens cannot afford prices for these trash. Sixty-three percent want to keep the trash service as it is with multiple choices. Says, we don't want a city council to make the decision to have more than one. Bring up a point here. Now, this is not exactly the trash hauling, but I had a bunch of limbs from a lilac bush, and I threw it in the back of my truck, talking about a one service. And I took it down here to waste management, to over here on Union, uh, to the station. Anyway, I told the gal, she says, I want a hundred and nine dollars. I says a hundred and nine. I said, it used to be the top of the cab, it could be fifty or sixty. And I says to the side of the truck bed, a hundred and nine. One choice. So I end up driving down to Selayalia, and I went to the public dump. So anyway, the guy says, uh, you don't have that much here or what? So he says, uh, we'll go dump it, and we'll wait until you come back. So I come back. He says, I'll charge it, but the size would have matched, it would cost thirty-five bucks. That was my choice. But anyway, I just wanted to pass it on what a single trash hauler could do to you. Thank you.
Mr. Plute, thank you very much for, uh, coming tonight. Any questions? Mr. Plute, thank you for addressing council tonight. Up next is Mr. Bob Stevenson. Mr. Stevenson, if you could just state your name and your address or cross streets.
Bob Stevenson, uh, Bates and Grant. Uh, I feel like the Lone Ranger here tonight. But we have been looking at single trolley, single hauler trash collection for the last two or three years, studying all sorts of issues, trying to, uh, find the correct compromise. We are dealing now with land that is no longer available for trash acceptance. We are running out of space for our trash. We have three or four trash companies currently running through the streets of Inglewood on at least one day a week. Those trucks shake the neighborhoods when a single hauler would at least cut a third to a fourth of the traffic on those days. I agree with the people that if we have the alleys, we should be using them for trash collection. It upsets me that we have trucks going down streets that are heavily traveled, blocking traffic when we have accessible alleys that can be used for that purpose. We are living in a very crowded environment, and it's only getting worse. We have to start taking into account our neighbors, our community, and quit leaning on our freedoms. We need single trolley trash pickup here. It has worked in other areas. Sheridan has had it for a number of years, and they have accommodated people's needs and wishes. And I would like to see this at least placed on the ballot for the public to decide. Thank you.
Mr. Stevenson, thank you very much for coming tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Stevenson, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Mr. Steven Holter. Good evening, sir. If you could just state your name and your address or your cross streets.
Steven Holter, forty-four sixty South Lottie Street. I'm against the single hauler. This will be paid for by consumer dollars, not tax dollars. It'd be coming out of our wallets and pocketbooks. So this should be a vote of the people, not by city council. Um, the other one is that I think this smacks kind of of an HOA rule and regulation. There are a lot of people that live in Inglewood just so they're not under that kind of a, a banner. Another thing that I think is that is a single hauler issue takes away our power as a consumer to use the power of our spending dollar to get dol- uh, value and service for our dollar. And this will just cut that down a whole bunch. Um, single hauler ru- uh, rule could be seen as a corporate windfall, kind of guaranteed money. What businessperson would not want exclusive access to a subset of consumers that are forced to give them their money by a government entity? That kind of chunk of change would look good on a corporate balance sheet. And I don't see, and it's just, shouldn't be going there. Anyway, let's vote for it, and that's my thoughts. Thank you, guys.
Mr. Holter, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any con, or any questions? Seeing none, Mr. Holter, thank you for coming tonight. And that will conclude.
Actually, we do have one person online.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, Jan Brown, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, I'm Janice Brown. I live at, um, Lee High and Eladi. I want to say good evening to Mayor Sierra, city council and city staff. I attended all three community meetings in twenty nineteen. The usual opposition was there, but there were also many more people who wanted to give single hauler trash a try. Our air quality on the Front Range has been given an F rating by the American Lung Association, and the EPA is about to change our air quality status from serious to severe non-attainment. According to the American Lung Association, over forty percent of American, the American population, or a hundred and thirty-seven million Americans live with unhealthy level of air pollution, in part due to climate ca- chaos-driven wildfires. We must do everything we can to clean up our air, including decreasing the number of trash trucks driving up and down our streets. Breathing bad air can cause many illnesses and can result in early death. Just so you know, liquid natural gas is not benign. It is actually methane, which is eighty-four times more potent as a greenhouse gas than carbon dioxide. I think we have asked the, too much of the trash haulers doing both the streets and the alleys, for example. The gentleman from Republic told us that last week. We need to curb our expectations and try to renegotiate with the trash haulers. I do not think single hauler trash should be a ballot problem because we've elected city council to represent us, and if we do it by ballot, any change we want to make to the contract would have to go back to the ballot. When it comes to recycling, we are about to pass state legislation that would require producer responsibility. The producers of the packaging our products come in would be required to pay, to have it recycled. It is unfortunate that those in opposition of single haulers seem to be so loud. That does not mean the majority of Inglewood residents agree with them. I would like to thank Maria DeAndre for her incredible patience during this process. On a different topic, I would also like to thank everyone who worked to put the, together the extremely springy event of April ninth, especially Tony Arnaldi. It was a wonderful time for all who participated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brown, for speaking tonight. Any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Brown, thank you for your time tonight. And that now concludes unscheduled public comments. I will give Member Noonan Camp a minute to, she's ready to go. Member Noonan Camp.
Good note taker. Thank you. Okay, um, since I believe everyone came tonight to speak at single hauler, I do want to address some of the comments collectively, if that's okay, since there were several of you and in the interest of time. I do want to say thank you for your time. Thank you for being here. It's a sacrifice out of your evening to come and be part of this process, and I understand that, and I want to acknowledge that. I appreciate you for coming and doing this. Um, throughout this process, I personally have learned how personal trash is to so many of us in our community. This issue matters a lot for members of the community on both sides of the issue, and I appreciate you taking the time to share your perspectives with us. Ms. Carr, you are correct. This is a re- representative form of government, and I know that each one of us takes our roles as your representatives incredibly seriously, and I will take all of your concerns into consideration as I evaluate this proposal, as well as every citizen who has emailed me, completed a survey, spoken to me on the street, or communicated in another way. We're gathering all of this information so that we can make the best choice for the community, and I appreciate you taking the time to be here. I wanted to address a couple of things that came up. One is about the Waste Management Trash Collection License. I do believe that there is a city council request on that issue that we're waiting to hear back from, so we have already asked for a council request on that. Um, about the Um, about the survey results, uh, Mr. Wright, you were looking for them. They're actually in tonight's agenda packet if you would like to see them. Um, so they'll be available there for you. Um, we heard a few members of the community who are concerned about some of the rules of decorum that we've asked for in this chamber. Things like not clapping, not cheering, um, and concerns about that could be an infringement on personal expression. It's because we take your First Amendment rights to come and speak to us so seriously that we don't want anyone to have them infringed on or to be intimidated from the ability to come and speak their mind completely to council. Something that I take very seriously, that this chamber is a place where we can come and share our ideas respectfully. And we want to do so in a way that includes as many people from our community as possible, regardless of what opinion that they hold. So it is something that, um, we think is important and we appreciate your cooperation. And that's the Inglewood can be a place where people feel comfortable coming and sharing their opinions because we need to hear from you and we want to ensure that that right's protected for everyone in our community. And then the last thing I'd like to address is just, I don't always agree with my colleagues uh on this council on policy issues. But I do believe that every single one of us strives to do this job with the utmost commitment and integrity. Having a position on a policy issue does not equate to a conflict of interest. We have a fantastic legal counsel here in the city that ensures that we stay within those bounds. And I do want to um uh, if there are rumors out there about certain things, put those to rest, that we are striving to do this job with the utmost integrity, as well as our staff who work tirelessly for this city and for this community with radical commitment and with integrity to serve well. So I want to put those rumors to rest. Um, having an opinion on a policy does not equate to a conflict of interest and we will be giving direction next week. So thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else? Member Russell.
Um, I would like to do a couple of council requests and suggestions. One of them, to add more trash cans to Bellevue Park. Um, could we get information on the feasibility of that? Um, also, I know that a couple of people spoke tonight about um the camping on um at um Kaufman's. And I actually know that there was a response to a citizen that brought that up as well. And that council has not addressed camping bans on public property. So I'd actually like to get more information about council um, on public right-of-way, I mean, about council um, looking at camping bans on public right-of-way.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anything else? Anyone else? I have one other council request. City Manager, if we could get a council request on just the revenues for the biogas project. I know that we're going to be getting them here in July, but if we could just get them ahead of time, that would be nice as well. Thank you, City Manager. Um, if no other comments, we'll go ahead and move on to consent agenda item nine. We actually, there is one that we need to pull. I believe all members of council received the email earlier today, but we are pulling nine C one because the budget supplemental was not supposed to be on consent agenda item, uh, consent agenda item for tonight. So if I could get a motion to approve nine B one, nine B two, nine B three, nine B four, and nine C two.
So moved.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. If we could please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six eyes.
Thank you, City Clerk. And I guess we just move to nine C one, the budget supplemental at this point. Uh, staff recommend City Council approve a resolution approving an appropriation supplemental totaling four million five hundred and sixty thousand three hundred and eighty-five and Director of Finance Jackie Lowe may be online. Oh, there he is. Yeah. Ms. Lowe. Good evening, Director Lowe.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I will give you an overview of the twenty twenty-two Budget Supplemental Resolution Number Two of four point six million tonight. And I will break it down by the twenty twenty-one carry forward ARPA funding allocation, twenty twenty-two new requests, contingency line item reclassification, and reclassifications among other funds. Before I review the resolution, let me recap the impact of the Budget Supplemental Resolution Number One on general fund. In the Budget Supplemental Resolution Number One, uh, I want to cover the impact on the general fund only. We have sixty-seven thousand dollar allocated for one-time project, um, two hundred and twenty-three thousand related to personnel. Of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, fifty-five thousand's related to convert a library part-time position to a full-time position. Also, we move the employees to a ninety percent of midpoint. So if you can see the screen, there are six large bullet points summarize the four point six million budget supplemental. So let me go over each item uh for you.
Point of information?
Yes?
Member Russell.
Can, it's not on our screen.
Rights. Thank you, Member Russell. Director Lowe, give us one second. Uh, City Clerk, were you able to get them on the screens, rest of you?
I just don't have this document, so if somebody could get that to me, I can get it up right away.
Mayor, I apologize. There is no PowerPoint for tonight, so Director Lowe had asked on the clerk's office to put this on screen. But Director Lowe, it is so small that it's uh actually distracting to have it on screen. So please go through your presentation verbally.
Okay, why do I make this bigger? Can you see?
It's better to see now. Uh, Member Russell, are you able to see that or?
Director Lowe, uh, members of council are saying they still can't see it.
Um.
Director Lowe, one second. Uh, Member Noonan Camp.
It's in our packet. Are you able to access our packet?
Yes.
On the screens, Clerk?
I don't bring my computer. I have a paper copy and it wasn't in the paper copy.
Oh, no, that, I think that question-
Is it?
To the City Clerk, I'm sorry.
Here. Oh.
It's page two of the staff report.
Director Lowe, give us one second. See if we could get it on the screen here.
Okay.
I have one, but it's all highlighted. Right here. That's it. Where we go number supplemental one, if this is supplemental two. I don't have that. That's what I-
I'm gonna see if I can-
It's all ready. Yes, we're going over this one. It's two.
Direct Lowe, Director Lowe, just give us one second. We're seeing-
Right, thank you.
The City Clerk is trying to pull it up now, but yeah, just give us about thirty seconds now.
Member Noonan Camp, what document are you looking at? I don't see one in the packet. I mean, is it a PowerPoint?
Well, it's not a PowerPoint. It just would be the informations that she's going through on slides.
For table.
That's what's on screen now, but I think it's still.
We, we see nothing here.
I got you.
Actually, can, can I ask a question? I was assuming that she was going over uh budget supplemental number one, reviewing that, or no? I mean, we do have supplemental budget number two in the packet.
Correct. Yeah, I did want to recap. Budget supplemental number one is not included, but I'm going to go over twenty uh, Budget Supplemental Resolution Number Two with you now.
Would that be okay, Member Russell? Do we still need the packet? Okay, we're, we're good to go then. City Clerk, I think we can move forward. We don't have anything on this screen, but I do have the packet right in front of me. Any other questions from council before Director Lowe continues? I think we're good. Director Lowe, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Um, so if you open your packet, um, there is a table. There are six bullet points. So I want to go over each one with you and summarize the impact on general fund for you. The first one is seventy thousand of this amendment is already in the budget under the contingency line item for a computer phone equipment for the new employees. So what this does is we just decrease the number in the contingency line item and increase the IT's budget. There's no impact on the bottom line for general fund. And the second one, this is three hundred and thirty-seven, um, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand is the ARPA restriction restricted in the general fund fund balance and needs to be reclassified due to the following identified projects. The two hundred and fifty-eight thousand is for the cross-purpose career guidance facility is a, a capital project. Also, twenty-nine thousand is for the city's twenty twenty-two share in a tri-city's homeless action plan for one coordinator position. And fifty thousand is for the Economic Development Staff Recruitment Bonus Program. So this is ARPA funding related. The next one, this is for twenty twenty-one carry forward. Uh, two point nine million is a payoff of the outstanding certificates of participation COPs in June twenty twenty-two. We're scheduled to pay off uh this year in June. We're planning to pay off the twenty twenty-three balance as well. So we pay off the entire COPs. Also, thirty-five thousand is for the homeless action plan, uh, career center. The fifty thousand is for the Equity Inclusion Strategic Plan. So the total, um, this number add-ups is only all related to twenty twenty-one carry forward. And I will leave the twenty twenty-two new requests for the general fund to the last. I want to cover the transfer among other funds first. If you see bullet point number three, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, due to the market conditions, we're going to um transfer a hundred and twenty-five thousand from the unappropriate fund balance in the open space fund to the public improvement fund. And bullet number four, the total eight hundred and one thousand of that, two hundred and fifteen thousand is related to ARPA project. We're just tran- um transferring the money from the ARPA net position, not net position to um sewer fund. And also, we need to identify additional six hundred and fifty-seven thousand from the uh net position um to fund these two new projects related to sewer line. For storm water, we identified two hundred and ninety-two thousand for the ARPA project. The last one is a surf fund. We need to allocate ninety thousand dollars from unrestricted surf fund balance to fund additional ninety thousand dollars for acquisition of vehicles. Now I want to go back to the twenty twenty-two new requests. The first one is a hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred for additional personnel costs. Of that, forty-six thousand is for communication department staff reclassifications. And eighty-seven thousand five hundred is for the police department new desk officer and records specialist position as a request by council member. That's one full-time position. Also, a hundred and fifty thousand's approved loan amount to EDDA. You probably have seen this transfer out in our audit of financial already. The next three items, we also have incurred a one, um, three hundred thousand dollars community development uh building revision, plan review fee, and eighty thousand dollars for uh fire marshals' office plan review fees. However, these two additional costs are offset by additional revenue, one point two million um to cover these expenditures. Therefore, the net impact on the general fund balance is additional eight hundred and twenty thousand. Then we have additional rising printing cost, twenty thousand, and enhanced service civic center security services, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The last one, we sent a RFP for our comm study and we chose one vendor. We need to allocate a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the comm study, which is scheduled to be completed in the fourth quarter this year. Of the hundred and seventy-five thousand, a hundred and thirteen, fourteen thousand um is allocated to general fund. The remaining sixty-one thousand dollars will be absorbed by all these other funds listed in this table. Let me summarize this entire four point six million for you. Of the four point six million, two hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred costs are recurring costs and have a compound effect on the future budgets, such as a forty-six thousand dollar for the personnel in communication department, eighty-seven thousand five hundred for police department new desk officer, and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the additional security services. However, we might have additional five, recurring five hundred and fifty thousand. Um, we are not sure at this juncture if we'll have additional a plan review fees for the fire marshals' office or a community development, or if DDA will um borrow additional money for city for twenty twenty-three or beyond. So this concludes my um presentation tonight. The directors are all ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Director Lowe, for going through that step by step. Any questions from council? Mayor Potem.
Director Lowe, my question is in regards to the plan review line. Uh, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in additional costs for plan review. Uh, isn't plan review fee supported? Is there something I'm missing there? It seems like if we're supplementing the budget, we should be backfilling that with an equal or greater amount coming in as fees.
Yeah, you are correct. Three hundred thousand without parentheses is cost. Eighty thousand without parentheses is cost. One point two million with parentheses in this instance is revenue. So there's additional net revenue.
Okay, so it's just a question of the, the way it's written here. And that eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars in additional revenue is coming out of the grand total of four point two million dollars?
Um, it's a net. Think about, we receive one point two million revenue and we have to pay plan review fees. Um, and the, and this will go to our um bottom line, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Okay, so we're being-
Eight hundred and twenty thousand, but it's the one time.
We're being asked to fund it now, but we believe that revenue will come in in order to make up for that cost? Is, am I understanding correctly? I'm a little, a little confused. But, well, my question is, is the bottom dollar that we have, this four point two million dollars or four point five million dollars that we're looking to approve tonight as a supplemental? Have we, is that, does that include a negative eight hundred and twenty thousand? Because we believe that we're generating revenue off plan review? Does that question-
That's included.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Uh, Member Woodward.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, on the first page, the payoff on the COPs, you show two point nine million dollars. Um, and is that also a net number? Do we have, I assume we have a monthly debt service on that? So we, we would be eliminating that debt service from June through December. And where, where is that credit? If there is one or it might be net.
Well, we usually pay off the principal and interest, um, I think on June first. But we just want to pay off the twenty twenty-two and the twenty twenty-three balance by the end of June first this year.
Okay, but where-
This is a, mm-hmm.
I assume in the budget, in the twenty twenty-two budget, there is a payment shown every month for a COP payment, debt service payment. Is that correct?
We don't pay off COP on a monthly basis. Um, I need to ask confirm. We only pay, I think we pay principal only once a year. We pay interest twice a year.
Okay. So there isn't any debt service on that for the remainder of the year in the budget?
If we pay, if we pay this off.
Correct.
Yes, and this is-
Wasn't budgeted in the budget as a, as any debt service payment for the balance of the year?
Um, I believe we have twenty twenty-two payment included in the budget, but let me double check.
Okay, so if we did have it, then I assume at some point in, in a budget appropriation supplemental number three or four or something, you may show a credit coming back just because it was in the budget of whatever that number would be. So the two point nine payoff is a prin- So the two point nine payoff is a principal number, doesn't pick up? The the remaining remainder of that debt?
Yes.
Interest debt, thank you.
I'll clarify that for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Any other questions? Actually, Director Lo, I have one question, sorry, um, Member Russell, I'll just ask my question, it's just one. So regarding the certificates of participation, I believe we had a conversation about this. Either earlier this year or late last year with either bond counsel or just some type of representatives. But there was a question about whether or not we wanted to, at that point, delay the paying off the certificates of participation until twenty twenty-two. Um, and there was a couple of reasons why we wanted to delay it. So I'm guessing that those issues are now resolved and we're good to pay it off.
Um, I cannot answer this question because it seems like the um dissolving eve and paying off COP are two different.
Okay.
Uh, tasks. So if we can pay off the debt by June first, but regarding the dissolving eve, that's a different, um, require a different conversation.
Perfect, thank you, Director Lo. Member Russell?
Thank you. So did we set aside money to pay off the certificates of participation in twenty twenty-one? And is that the same amount that we're moving forward into twenty twenty-two? Plus it's going to be more, correct?
This is a budget supplemental approved by council in twenty twenty-one. But we didn't have a chance to pay off the COP, so we're just caring for the twenty twenty-one amount to twenty twenty-two.
Okay, and then the other question that I have is how much money have, did we have left over at the end? Of twenty twenty-one? Is that complete? Is our twenty twenty-one budget complete?
Yes, that's why we have a couple items, twenty twenty-one carry forward, um, including in this budget supplemental. Yeah, like two point nine million is one, thirty-five thousand for homeless action plan is second. And fifty thousand for equity inclusion strategic plan, that's a third. These are all carry forward from twenty twenty-one.
But are those deficits? I mean, are those expenses or revenue?
Expenses.
Okay, so I guess the bottom line I'm asking is, are we increasing our twenty twenty-two budget? Or is this net zero? All these changes?
Twenty twenty-one, this, we are using um. On a sign fund balance to pay for these carry forward. Uh, but if you see, what is the impact on the twenty twenty-two budget? As I mentioned, um, two hundred sixty-three thousand five hundred are recurring costs. That will impact this year's bottom line and moving forward. And also five hundred thirty thousand dollars, maybe one time, but like a plan review fees. But they are covered by the revenue.
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question to Member Russell?
Sure, City Manager.
Uh, Member Russell, are you asking for the total amount that we essentially deposited into the unassigned fund balance after we closed the books in twenty twenty-one? Or what the difference is, what the line items total that we're just simply carrying forward that were from last year into this year?
Well, I guess what I'm a little bit confused on is even though we're carrying forward items, don't we normally do that? If we don't complete a project in twenty twenty-one, it is carried forward? Or are these new projects that were never started?
Well, unfortunately, the way the charter is written, we cannot carry forward projects that are not capital. So capital projects, if they've been put into a capital, into the CIP, can be carried forward until those projects are done. We cannot do that with operating type um funds.
Okay, yeah, I understand that. So um, I guess what I'm concerned about is why we've had to search everywhere in all of these funds. It looks to me kind of like a shell game. And I don't want it necessarily to look like that. Was it necessary to do all of these in one? Was part of this because of the ARPA funds?
It was, and Director Lo, do you want to um answer that?
Let me, let me paraphrase your question. Um, bloody, beginning the presentation, I broke this down into five um segments. What's twenty twenty-one carry forward because council approving twenty twenty-one, we didn't get a chance to complete those or carry forward. The others are part of funding. We receive the money in June twenty twenty-one. Now we just need to appropriate the revenue from uh ARPA funding balance to move forward. And the third one is contingency line item reclassification. We have those projects budgeted in contingency line already. Now we're just moving them from contingency fund to the department that is responsible for this project. And also we have reclassification among different funds. We just need to move from different unappropriate fund balance, uh, like open space. Or on a pro, um, on a sign fund balance, like like a surf. To for additional costs in projects or new projects. So the only new request, twenty twenty-two, is what I review over here. A hundred thirty-three thousand additional per sale cost, DDA loan, uh, plan review fees. Rising print costs, additional service for security and comm study for a hundred seventy-five thousand. These are really new requests for twenty twenty-two. Also, I review the compounding effect of those requests. Not just affecting this year's bottom line, but a twenty twenty-three and beyond.
And Member Russell, if I can add to that, we, I certainly understand, um, um, the, appreciate the question that you're asking. Because I think the case could be made, we are shifting things around. I think from an accounting standpoint, it's what we have to make sure, have to do to make sure that the books are right. Um, you know, we have to have, you know, corresponding uh revenue with expenditures. Unless we're taking out of the unassigned fund balance, which is what the, why um the director is really zeroing in on those handful of items that are being pulled out of the unassigned fund balance. Otherwise, you're right, it it looks like we're just moving money around, but it's really just to, you know, comply with government accounting standards.
Okay, and I understand that. So um, the unassigned fund balance, are we actually taking more out of the unassigned fund balance than we have talked about up to this point?
Director Lo, you may want to take this, but um in terms of this particular budget amendment combined with budget amendment number one. We are, we have not taken out as much as was rolled into it when we closed out the books in twenty twenty-one. Does that answer your question?
That that does answer my question is, and just one other question, is there any way to? I mean, we spent an entire year doing the budget and now we're changing it. And um, is there any way to make that easier? I mean, I'm, I guess I'm assuming that ARPA is a big deal because that's separate money. Um, is that most of the problem?
It is, and thank you for the question. Um, you know, I think I might have mentioned this at the last um budget amendment, but you know, we we do plan on bringing five total budget amendments to council. Um, throughout the year, ARPA certainly has made the dollar amount larger, um, that we have to reappropriate. But we are going to encounter, um, you know, e- expenses that have either gone up because of inflation, supply chain, et cetera. That we need to take into account as this does. We never expected the level of development that's occurred in Inglewood to be um what it is. So we have to increase those um contracts for those services. Luckily, we're actually getting more revenue than we are incurring costs for that development, um, plan review, inspection services, et cetera. So you'll continue to see minor adjustments, what I consider minor, when you consider we're a fifty-five million dollar budget. You'll continue to see those um throughout the year. We have created new criteria for um the leadership team in which to bring budget amendments. And um, so we're trying to bring some rigor to that process and and make sure that when we bring a budget amendment, we've exhausted all other possibilities to fund. Um, you know, whatever cost increase we can do and only bring those to you under certain circumstances.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Russell. Mayor Protam?
I want to make sure that after hearing those comments, I have my head wrapped around this completely as well. Because I share a little bit of Member Russell's uh confusion, for lack of a better word, on the what we're actually doing here. So uh, we have carryover from last year, that's the bulk of what we're being asked to approve this year, which is stuff that was approved last year, but the money didn't get spent for whatever reason. And then we have this remaining roughly seven hundred fifty thousand dollars or so. You mentioned two hundred fifty thousand is for new services, so that would come out of our unassigned fund balance for this year. Things that we didn't plan for in the last cycle that we're adding uh new that would be ongoing. And then roughly five hundred thousand dollars, and again, I'm just kind of spitballing these numbers. Uh, in new capital expenditures, which were not included in last year's budget or planned for this year at at the time that we're being asked to approve them now. That's our intent is to plan for them over the course of the next year, is that correct?
You're almost right, we have for the recurring, um. Uh, a hundred thirty-three thousand for additional personnel costs. And the plan review fees and contract services and comm study, a hundred and five thousand. We haven't touched on a sign fund balance yet. We're just using the revenues to cover these expenditures. And for me, I'm, yeah, but for me, I'm paying more attention to the compound effect of these requests to twenty twenty-three and beyond.
Great, thank you.
Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you, Mayor. Just out of this conversation, I wonder if maybe there's a note for staff of just a, maybe a more clear way to note these supplementals moving forward? Especially when I look at this, there are several things here that are just one line, you know, it's a very small expenditure, but rising printing costs. Is that internal, is that the Citizen Magazine? I would like a little bit more clarification on what we're proving, since this is a lot of money, it's a lot of taxpayer money. Um, enhance civic center security services, I know we've had a lot of conversations about enhancing the security, but I'm not sure specifically what this piece is going toward. So I think moving forward, a little bit more description and detail would be helpful. And then clarification, maybe even within the table or how it's laid out. What exactly are the things that we're carrying over? What are the things that are kind of more checking the box for our personally? And then what are the things that are new that council has approved or that you're asking for for the first time so that we can kind of see the difference, if that makes sense?
Absolutely, it does, and we will um make an attempt to do that. And maybe if you don't mind, maybe one or more council members, we could bounce these ideas off of you in advance or the Budget Advisory Committee. Yes, glad to do that.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Actually, I was thinking like the credits and the debit should be in different, different columns at the very least. Um, but no, I I appreciate that. Uh, any other comments from council or questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve nine C one?
So moved.
Thank you, Mayor Protam, can I get a second?
Second.
Any additional comments from council? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Here's Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six side.
Director Lo, thank you very much for taking us through that step by step. Uh, there is no public hearing items for tonight, we're moving on to uh approval of ordinances on first reading. First up is eleven A one, intergovernmental agreement with the Repaho County concerning open space shareback funds. Open Space Manager Dave Lee is here tonight. To walk us through this one by one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here tonight to introduce Michelle Freshman. Uh, she's from Repaho County Open Spaces. She is the Grants and uh Acquisitions Manager. And she's coming to us remotely and she has a little bit of a presentation for all of you.
Perfect, good evening.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for inviting me to join you tonight. Um, I do have just a very brief presentation to give you some background on this intergovernmental agreement request. On the county's open space shareback program. So if I can share my screen, then I will um walk you through these few slides.
Give us one second here while we get to those slides.
Okay, do you have them yourself?
I'm sorry, Michelle, go ahead, I don't think we have the slides.
I think she needs.
Okay.
So I don't know if we have done that yet, but if we haven't, we should get to that.
There we go.
Are you able to see my screen?
We can.
Okay, great, all right, well, I won't take up too much of your time. Um, so uh, as many of you may know. The um shareback program through the county's open space program is funded with fifty percent of the annual revenue that's collected from the county's open space sales and use tax. And then that's distributed to the various municipalities throughout the county. The each city or town's um distribution is based on the population of that city within the county. As a percentage of the total incorporated population within the county. Um, and so as of last year's numbers, Inglewood was around six point three percent. Um, and as you also may know, um, uh, we were successful last year in having the voters permanently reauthorize the open space sales and use tax. Uh, included with that ballot initiative was a new county resolution that governs the use of the open space funds, including the shareback funds. And so as a result of that new resolution being in place, we are entering into a new intergovernmental agreement with each municipality. To cover the shareback program, how it's administered, what the requirements are. And to incorporate that new twenty twenty-one resolution, so that's what brings us here tonight. So just to highlight a few of the items, a few of the differences in the new shareback IGA from the previous one that Inglewood has with the county. We, the original was entered into in two thousand and four, it was then amended in twenty twelve, which was the last time the voters renewed the open space sales and use tax. Um, so with this brand new IGA, we will be fully replacing and terminating that prior IGA and amendment. Um, we have incorporated a new provision um that requires any income generated from the use of the shareback funded properties to be used in accordance with the resolution. So for open space parks and trails purposes, that has always been the county's intention. And I believe the way it has always applied, um, its requirements to shareback spending. But ultimately had not been explicitly included in the IGAs in the past that we included at this time around. And then these last two bullet items actually come out of requests that came from the various municipalities while we were working toward their reauthorization of the tax. So the first one is um to expand eligible trail projects that can be funded with shareback money. To include not just kind of standalone trails, but also on-street trails or trails on side paths connected to streets. As long as those um two new types of trails um are are intended to connect an isolated area to an existing park. Trail system, open space, school. Um, and as long as they um were contemplated under an existing master plan or similar document. At the regional level, at the county level, um, or by some special districts such as a park and rec district. And then lastly, um, we are now open to the possibility of increasing the percentage of shareback funds that can be used for maintenance of. Parks, open space, trails, sports fields. Previously, that amount was, originally it was capped at ten percent, in twenty twelve it was increased to twenty percent. And now, um, the county has heard from enough municipalities who are are interested in going above twenty percent. That we have opened up the opportunity to approach the county with a request for an increase. Um, that we will need to have seed backed up with data and other information to justify that request. Ultimately, it would need to be approved by the Open Space and Trails Advisory Board, as well as the Board of County Commissioners. Um, and and if it were approved, then we would ultimately amend the IGA to incorporate that increased percentage. So right now, the way the IGA is written is at that twenty percent that has been in place for ten years now. But we are open to requests to to raise that. Uh, and just to give you a glimpse of how Inglewood has um uh enjoyed its shareback funds over the years. Um, I grabbed a few numbers just from the last few years. Last year's uh shareback payment was over a million dollars, but as you can see from the last several years. It has been increasing yearly, um, right along with the revenue from the open space sales and use tax. And some of the uses that Inglewood has been able to put the shareback funds to are. include park improvements, trail replacement, landscaping and irrigation improvements, purchasing maintenance equipment, and providing matching funds for our open space grants. And so, that's all I have for you tonight. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Ms. Freshman, for the presentation tonight. Any questions from council? I believe we got a presentation for Commissioner Warren Gully sometime last year on this as well, prior to the, the ballot, so. Mayor Protem?
I see a provision in the IGA for Open Space and Trails Advisory Board. I'm just curious if Inglewood has any representation on that board?
Yes, so there are seven members of that board. Five of them are allocated by the same districts that the county commissioners serve on. And so, I apologize, off the top of my head, I can't recall. I think it's District One, that Commissioner War, no, I'm sorry. Commissioner Warren Gully, I'm not, I, I'd have to look up which district she represents. But that district is represented on the open space board. Additionally, we have two other seats that are at-large seats. So, there's representation of the entire county on that board.
And I'm getting a little bit of clarification, she is District One from the crowd, so.
She is District, that's, okay, thank you. She is District One.
Any other questions, Mayor Protem? Member Woodward?
First, I just want to point out, and maybe Dave could confirm this, on the open space board is Beth Bryant Shaw, who is the longest-serving council member in the city of Inglewood at sixteen years in four different terms. So, uh, we are well-represented by, on that board. And I, I just want to mention, when this originally was out, and I think Dave can confirm this, that there was no money in it the first term, that first ten years or twelve years, whatever it was, for maintenance. And it was, when it first came up for renewing it, was when the first ten percent went in, because the different parks and recreation and municipalities went in and said, hey, we've got all this stuff, and we have no way to maintain it. And so, and now I see, you know, with the latest one, it's gone up to twenty percent, which starts to get more in line with, you know, stuff that we're living with. So, I want to thank you for the presentation, and welcome to the city of Inglewood.
Thank you.
Jim, I really thought you had a question there, but I guess not, so.
I am so used to what it used to be like.
You keep doing you, Jim.
Questions or comments?
Keep doing you, Jim. No, it's, thank you for that, Jim. Any other questions from council? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve eleven A one?
I move to approve CB twenty-seven, eleven A one.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Could I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Member Woodward. Sorry, I'm joking with you, Member Woodward. Any additional comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show six aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lee and Ms. Freshman, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a good evening. Moving on to eleven B one, CB twenty-five, we have Director of Public Works Maria DeAndrie, Senior Capital Project Specialist Melinda Goblerch, I may mispronounce that, and Facilities Project Manager John Donakowski to discuss a bill of ordons approving a memorandum of understanding between city of Inglewood and the energy contracting program.
Maria, do you mind if I break in for a quick announcement? That there has been an accident in the southern part of the city that's knocked out power. Some of you that live in the southern part of the city may have gotten notifications, but police is on scene, Excel Energy is working to repair, but the car accident did take out a power pole. So, we just wanted to let you know, we're getting texts and messages, but we have put something on Facebook, so.
Thank you, city manager.
I did receive notice from my own home in southwest Inglewood, District Four. The power has been restored, so it's back on at my house.
Thank you, city manager. Director DeAndrie?
Yes, thank you, mayor. We'll just be able, be available to answer any questions on this item, since we presented last time.
Correct. Thank you, Director DeAndrie. Any additional questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve eleven B one?
I move to approve eleven B one.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any additional comments? Member Russell?
Thank you. I, I just wanted to weigh in on this again, that I am opposed to this, because I believe it's allowing another govern, government organization to dictate what we need. We're obligated to provide staff, we are short staff, and I am concerned about the amount of staff time required. So, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, member Russell. Any additional comments? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Ward?
Aye.
Member Woodward?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, city clerk. Moving on to, going to item twelve, just general discussion. I'll start it off with mayor's choice. Not much tonight. Unfortunately, I would not be here this weekend, so I would not be able to go to celebrate Inglewood this coming Saturday, which is a shame, because I really enjoyed it last year. So, uh, it is from ten a.m. to two P.M. at Denny Miller Field, so hope everybody has a great time. I also want to, I forgot to bring it tonight, but last Wednesday, was it Wednesday? Thursday, Dr. Cog, uh, provided the cities of Inglewood, Littleton, and Sheridan the Metro Vision Award for their homelessness plan, the Tri-City Seas Homelessness Plan. So, we got to accept the award with the mayor of Sheridan, Tara. And I always forget Tara's last name. She's going to kill me. Anyway, so, uh, but no, I, I just want to just congratulate staff and all our partners for, for that award, because it's really them that drove that award, um, to get it with, um, for us to be nominated for that, and obviously the cooperation with Littleton and Sheridan for that award. But it was a great evening, and I'd just love to see staff and just three cities being recognized for such an award. And lastly, there, there was one other thing that I wanted to mention, and I'll just ask council, just because it came up tonight. I'm not sure if we have it on the agenda yet, but Eevee, whether or not we'd have to have a study session on the dissolving Eevee in the near future, obviously with the COPs being paid off at some point this year. I'm just kind of curious if we need to start having the discussions at some point in the second half of the year. And so, I'll just leave it to staff to kind of dictate in terms of whether or not that that's something that needs to be had, and then we could discuss it next time around, whether or not we need to have this study session item. That's it for me tonight. Uh, council members' choice. Member Russell?
Thank you. And, and actually, I would like to have a study session where we could discuss the dissolution of Eevee. If we're going to pay off the certificates of participation, I think we need to have that before. And I think right now, the plan is June first. So, um, I think we should talk about that.
Thank you, member Russell.
The, um, I have one thing, and I, I don't know if this is a council request. It, it has to do with a water bill. And if, if the water bills are due on the first of the month, I always pay on the first of the month. Now, today is the first time I didn't, because our payday is the first of the month. And so, I brought it in. I would have brought it yesterday, but I don't, I won't put it in the drop boxes anymore. So, um, I think, you know, if there's something that we need to do to make a secure drop point, that's great. But, so, by paying on the first of the month, when my bill came, it wasn't credited. The payment wasn't credited. And I, if I wouldn't have been looking at it, I probably would have paid the whole thing, and then I would have been really upset. But I'm wondering why it can't be, uh, the credit be on there. Then the other thing is the directions on the back of the bills are not updated. It's still assuming that we are having quarterly payments. And I think that if we're having monthly payments, that, that should be able to be updated. And I, I do have a council request, but I will talk to you about, it's the same one that came in before, and I just didn't know if you were able to put it together. So, I can share that with you this week. You may, it may already come out, the answer to it before then, but, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, member Russell. Anyone else tonight? Another council request, then we move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of things. I, I want to, first off, uh, thank you for the recognition on the Dr. Cog Award. And really, now that we don't have Littleton and Sheridan present, although I hope they're watching our meetings, tell you that honestly, Tim Dodd, Assistant City Manager, did yeoman's work on that action plan. He recruited the consultant who walked us through it. He really guided the whole process and did an outstanding job with that. And I really credit him with that award and a couple of others we've gotten for that. And then, secondly, we do want to just, uh, I'd like for Stephanie Cler, excuse me, city clerk Stephanie Carla, to talk a little bit about the Citizen of the Year Award. We've just got a quick decision we need to make, not quick, we can make it anytime, but give your feedback before we start scheduling that, so. Her Carla?
So, we tentatively had the celebration for the Citizen of the Year scheduled for the last study session meeting in May, or I'm sorry, in June. And as we were looking ahead at agenda items coming forward, one of our concerns, because we do the agenda management, was looking ahead, because we are taking the first two weeks of July off. And so, I think our question to you is, and we certainly want you to guide this, is, are you still okay with scheduling the celebration of the, um, Citizen of the Year celebration on that Monday in place of a study session on the twenty-fifth? Or do you want to handle agenda items and then choose a different evening that week for the Citizen of the Year celebration, so?
And Clerk Carla, I think you told me that in the past, we have done that on a night separate from council meeting, right?
Yeah, we've done it both ways. So, yep, we've, we've had it in place of a meeting, or we've had it on a separate evening.
Thank you, city clerk. Thanks for bringing this up as well, because I was kind of trying to figure out the timing of it during the last mayor manager's meeting. And because I know that we have those first two weeks off of July, my preference, um, obviously, just, just looking at, or, I would like to see, actually, you need to schedule it now. My preference would be to have two separate nights for them. So, Monday night, keep it as a regular study session, and then recognize Citizen of the Year on Tuesday or Wednesday night. Just because I'm afraid of how much is going to pile up before the two-week break. Any, anyone else want to weigh in? Member Woodward?
I would agree with what you just said. Also, may I ask a question? I, is this now also a celebration where we hold it somewhere like, I mean, if it's in June, it could be outside, or Malle or Hampton Hall?
I don't know the plans. I know in the past, we've done a big celebration at the Malle Center. But I, I don't know the plans for this year. We were just, I was just asked to kind of coordinate what date that would be for you.
Okay, I was, I just wanted to try and clarify it. Sounded like, in lieu of the study session, we were going to have it right here.
Oh, no, sorry. It's usually at a separate venue.
Okay, thank you.
We're open to your suggestions, Member Woodward.
We will choose a more festive place than city council chambers.
I'll bring studies, or, at our biweekly meeting, I'll bring you some suggestions. How, about thirty of them, or? Thank you.
Party at your house.
Any disagree? Members of council, any disagreement with that plan, two separate nights? No disagreement. Thank you, city clerk.
And mayor, one last thing, a quick question from Assistant City Manager Tom.
Thank you, City Manager Lewis. I can certainly put this in an email, too, but our energy provider, Excel, has a program called Excel Partners in Energy, which essentially, for their customers, provides a series of tools, including plan development in two thousand seventeen. They helped the city create an energy plan at that time. There was a working group that was primarily made up of city staff. However, there was one city councillor, a city council member Martinez at the time, participated in this working group. We'd like to engage them again for help with our electric vehicle plan. So, it's something that Public Works has been working on. This would be a free service. But our sustainability coordinator just wanted to see if there was any interest in city council of having a council member participate in this working group. There would be staff members as well, but just because there was a city council member last time that we engaged them in a process like this, we just wanted to see if you have any interest in participating.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. What day and time do we have that?
I don't know. So, I think we would kind of create that structure, because it would be driven by our sustainability coordinator. So, I think we have a level of flexibility with that.
And did you need a notary tonight, or just tap a snoodle on it?
Just wanted to let you know, and I can put it in an email to all of you if that's easier.
That will work.
Thanks.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Anything else, City Manager Lewis?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Seeing nothing else, we are now adjourned. It is nine twenty-six. See you all next week.